I'll call the -- is that working? I'll call to order this departmental hearings for the 2025 Bloomington City Budget, the second evening. And before we begin, let me begin with our land and labor acknowledgement for the city of Bloomington. We recognize that the city of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people. And we acknowledge that they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana, and specifically Bloomington, resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many Indigenous and other people of color, and commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity. Okay. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll. We're doing the roll and call? Okay. Ourselves? Okay. Councilmember Flaherty.
Here.
Councilmembers Zillie.
Here.
Councilmember Pete Mountsmith.
Here.
I am here. Dave Rowell. Councilmember Stasberg.
Here.
Councilmember --
Rosenbarger.
Rose -- Asari is going to join us in about 25 minutes. Councilmember Rosenbarger. Councilmember Daley.
Here.
Very good. So this evening, Tuesday, August 27th, we have the following departmental reports. We'll begin with Economic and Sustainable Development, and then we'll go to Parks and Recreation, Public Works, which consists of administration, animal care and control, facilities maintenance, fleet maintenance, parking services, sanitation, street and traffic. And that will conclude this evening's presentation. So let's begin with the Economic and Sustainable Development Department. Welcome. And I forgot to add, let me do this. We have structured debate this evening. Just to remind everybody that we will begin with a presentation from the departments, then we will go to councilmember questions for three minutes. We'll go to the public, both online and in the chambers, for two minutes, and then we'll return for final comment on the specific budget from council. Thank you.
The podium's just, I'm not really facing you guys, so this is a little challenging. Hi, everyone. It's Jane Cooper-Smith, Director of Economic and Sustainable Development. I'm really happy for the opportunity to present you with an overview of our proposed 2025 budget tonight. I know it has taken a dedicated amount of your time to dive into these documents, the budget book, and so I wanted to thank you for that. I will move through my slides as efficiently as possible, and then I will welcome your questions at the end. ESD, Economic and Sustainable Development, also known as ESD, drives economic growth by improving quality of life and quality of place through initiatives that advance climate action and resilience, that improve our built environment, and that support our small business and arts ecosystems. We see these areas as being mutually informative and beneficial. We are an outward-facing and highly collaborative department. We currently have eight full-time staff members, and starting this fall, we will have a total of six interns. This budget proposal requests an additional FTE, or Full-Time Employee, for our department. In ESD, if you're in chambers, would you please stand up and give us a wave? So we have a lot of department here. Thanks, everyone. Thank you for all the work you do to give our community a strong foundation. I'm really grateful to be your teammate. ESD has had an incredible -- yeah. ESD has had an -- no. Sorry. Here we go. ESD has had an incredible year already. This list includes a few highlights. I'll lift up one specifically. IU was recently awarded the College and Community Collaboration Grant in the amount of $16.1 million. This is from the Lilly Endowment to support a partnership between IU, the city, and the mill, the Dimension Mill, to accelerate development of the Trades District and Bloomington's tech sector, and to foster points of connection between town and gown through placemaking. This is a catalytic opportunity for Bloomington, and as it rolls out, I'll look forward to sharing more with you about that. I also want to highlight an overall theme in ESD. We are shifting away from the reactive mode that we necessarily embraced during pandemic response into a more strategic one, with long-term planning kicking off in multiple areas of our portfolio. I will set climate action aside here and just acknowledge that they have a very robust climate action plan, which Sean has recently updated you on, progress toward implementing that. This does not mean we are pausing on the work that we are already doing, but rather that we are putting a framework underneath our efforts to ensure that we work efficiently and effectively toward defensible shared goals for our community. In terms of challenges, salary study implementation remains the top priority for ESD. This is a mission-driven team, but without full implementation of the salary study, we cannot continue to advance our work. Rather, we would remain mired in turnover churn that has plagued departments across the city. I also wanted to cite a challenge not on this list. Secondary impacts of street homelessness are harming our economy and the vibrancy of our community. I'm afraid that I haven't shared enough information directly with councilmembers about these impacts. We receive emails, a lot of photographic evidence every day, and so I will just acknowledge that and commit to sharing those more directly with you all as they come in, and as is appropriate. I don't want to bombard you. So that just represents increasing challenges faced by businesses and residents in the downtown corridor, in the enterprise zone, and in adjacent areas. Again, lots of opportunities on the horizon for Bloomington, with the Monroe County Convention Center, Hopewell, and the CCC grant at the top of the list. These projects represent critical opportunities for diversification of housing and of our ESD has a broad range of activities, which we have distilled into four major goals. Much of our activity falls under multiple goals. For example, an arts nonprofit or a small business might receive a sustainability grant for a solar installation, which would tick multiple boxes here. Goal one: formalize and begin implementation of the city's economic development strategy. Goal two: reduce greenhouse gas emissions and improve climate resilience. Goal three: expand the creative economy. And goal four: foster resilience in our local small business and startup ecosystem. Overall budget sees an increase in personnel services due to the requested addition of one position and the recorded 3% cost of living adjustment. There is a reduction of 13% in 300 other services, which represents the bulk of our programming and other operating budget. This reduction is due to the loss of one-time CREED funding of $1,075,000 and the final ARPA budget from 2024, which earmarked $325,000 in ESD. As we move from 2024 to 2025, ESD will continue implementing programming from these CREED and ARPA funds alongside its new requested annual funding. We believe that this budget creates the opportunity to advance our portfolio at an appropriate pace while also engaging in the deliberate work of planning. As a reminder, ESD passes through $3.8 million in ED-Lit funding to Bloomington Transit. That's reflected in the 300 category under ED-Lit. BTE will detail their plans for this funding on Thursday evening. And I did also want to remind the council that our Assistant Director for Small Business Development, Dee Dillarosa, who is here tonight, serves as the staff liaison to the Bloomington Urban Enterprise Association. This is a public-private partnership. It is budgeted separately from the city's budget. It has a balance of about $2.5 million, closer to $3 million. And last year, its annual budget was $538,000. So it represents a significant amount of activity. And then in our budget, you see revenue in the form of a payment from the BUEA to the city for Dee's management of its operations. So just pointing out that there's a large chunk of money there that supports these overall goals, although technically it's from a separate fund. I'm going to skip through these two because I described this to you verbally, and then we'll jump into goal one: formalize and begin implementation of the city's economic development strategy. We do not have a major funding request related to the strategy goal because we believe that there is a lot of great work that has already been done in the community, from which we can draw to draft our plan. We look forward to communicating about this in more detail later this year. We aim for a release in 2025 of this plan. The increase in funding associated with goal one is related to the creation of a capital projects manager position. This position will take on oversight of the city's capital projects like Hopewell, which will increase in intensity as it moves through the development process. This role is cross-functional and outward-facing. This position would both increase internal capacity and lower contracted project management Other services represents the city's annual grant to the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, which is proposed for 2025 at the same funding level as 2024. It also includes ESD's general travel and consultant budget and recurring dues, some recurring dues and subscriptions. I also wanted to lift up, under this major economic development strategy goal, that Office of the Mayor had included a line item for branding that I believe is $110,000. We see that as part of this major economic development initiative. The recommendation for cohesive city-wide branding is a recommendation from the 2016 Wage Growth Task Force, which, although it's almost 10 years old now, remains relevant, in my opinion. We've implemented a number of the recommendations, but that one had sort of been left untouched. So I'm really happy that we are working to advance that. So, the need. Bloomington is at a critical moment. High cost of living and high income inequality make it a challenging place to live and work. The broader economic development community has done excellent analysis that focuses on more targeted issues or geographies that are broader than Bloomington. ESD draws from these plans to support the mayor's economic development goal, which is to make Bloomington a thriving, inclusive, and sustainable community with opportunity for prosperity for all residents. We seek a Bloomington that sustains its economic growth through strategic innovation and remains adaptable to the needs of a changing population. We can gauge our success by the release of an economic development plan from the Thompson Administration, which will crystallize our priorities as a city and streamline our work as a department. I think I'm going too slow, so I'm going to try to pick it up. Goal two is reduce greenhouse gas emissions and improve climate resilience. This goal is housed under ESD, but is cross-functional and community-wide. And I won't even get the chance to describe those great photos. There is no new impact on personnel. There is a reduction in the sustainability supplies budget because the Earth Day supplies were moved into the program budget. And I have a wrong number in this document. And finally, there is, where did we wind up, Sean? 1.6 billion in ED-Lit and 2.072 in total funding for sustainability. The sustainability budget benefited from CREED funding in 2024 and in ARPA from previous years. On the revenue side, we anticipate an increase in e-scooter licensing fees and have reflected that in our budget. Additionally, the TDM budget will be reimbursed at 80% by carbon reduction program funding, which will be received by the Metropolitan Planning Organization. The need for a community to respond to climate change cannot be overstated. The acute need for increased climate resilience programming is also clear. IU's Environmental Resilience Institute projects that Bloomington will have 37 total days with extreme heat events this year. We're having one today. ERI projects that by the 2050s, under medium emission scenario, Bloomington would experience 86 days of extreme heat. This slide illustrates the breakdown of the overall sustainability budget. I will note that food security shows up in the general fund, under $30,000 for local food and farm grants, and potentially under sustainability grants, which total $50,000. Food insecurity will be examined at a systems level under goal one, major economic development strategy. The vision for success for the city's sustainability program is that residents are able to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and therefore household expenses. ESD is able to continue engaging with a very wide and diverse audience. I want to note that we had 3,000 responses, probably more at this point, to our heat survey, community heat survey, earlier this summer. So we're getting really good data from the community and really good engagement. Another metric of success: programs would create buy-in and participation would continue to increase. This can be measured through survey responses, attendance at public outreach events, and grant application volume. Goal three is to expand the creative economy in Bloomington. This slide represents a few arts activities in Bloomington over the past year. The city's arts budget also benefited from ARPA and CREED funding. As a result, the ask for 2025 is smaller than in previous years. However, given that ESD will be programming ARPA and CREED into 2026, there is not a reduction in our activities. Additionally, ESD staff manages $110,000 in arts programming on behalf of the BUEA. Because artists rely on cheap space for studios, Bloomington's real estate market provides continued space challenges for working artists. ESD is addressing this through an ARPA-funded arts incubator pilot, for which a contract is currently under negotiation. The incubator will add affordable studio space and an accessible performance venue. We can't wait until we are able to share more about this. A vibrant arts community serves as a magnet for visitors and future residents. It creates a sense of community. It fosters a culture of innovation and creativity, and it can create jobs through visitor attraction. Oh, yeah. Plug: Don't forget to stop by the Fourth Street Arts Festival this weekend or by the Blacky Brown Arts Festival on September 14th at the Switchyard Pavilion. Success in the expansion of the creative economy will be evident with an increase in arts events, in attendance at arts events, and the range and volume of participating artists. Further, release of a cultural plan, which is already, will be underway in 2025, will drive long-term art strategy in Bloomington, helping us be deliberate about the use of our shared spaces. Community partners will understand and become drivers of the plan, and public art becomes a magnet for visitors and residents to get out and explore our community. Oh, now I went too fast. I've got five minutes left. Okay. Moving right along. Our small business ecosystem is the backbone of our local economy. It drives Bloomington's identity and employs thousands of people across numerous sectors. We seek to foster resilience in our local small business and startup ecosystem so that our locally-owned businesses can weather storms like a global pandemic and adapt to or create new technologies. There are no impacts to personnel, no new impacts to personnel, in the 2025 budget. Program support totals $377,500, as detailed in this slide. As I mentioned previously, the AD for Small Business Development staffs the BUEA, which has a mission to provide the means to improve the economic, physical, and social environment for zone residents and businesses. The 2024 BUEA budget was $538,000, and the BUEA will go through its own budgeting process later this year. Bloomington's local businesses remain vulnerable to high costs of rent, labor, and costs of goods sold. They are vulnerable to supply chain disruptions and to high interest rates, as well as long-term pandemic debt that they use to stabilize their operations. We receive daily communication about the secondary impacts of street homelessness and opioid use on local businesses. And it's all manner of businesses. It's not just core downtown food service retail. It's really diverse. Additionally, growth and development, like at Hopewell, can present, while it's exciting, can present significant challenges for neighboring businesses while it is in process. So just acknowledging that while we're working on major projects across the community, these street closures can really be damaging for neighboring organizations. We have an opportunity to strengthen these businesses with targeted programming to increase I don't know what this sentence is. "As we work as a city to help our community recover from the challenges that drive this acute crisis." Okay. Sure. Outputs and outcomes. We will know success through a stronger entrepreneurial ecosystem and culture. This is something that's palpable, so I don't think we can report on the vibe of the ecosystem. But as we're engaging with businesses, we can tell when we get more than the usual faces showing up at events, and we can know when we have different sectors of Bloomington engaged, when it's not just the downtown businesses, but we have east-side businesses, west-side businesses communicating with us about their needs. So success will be -- okay. So we will know success through a stronger entrepreneurial ecosystem. We will know it by increased number of graduates choosing Bloomington after graduation. We will know success of the business safety program and the city's efforts in addressing street homelessness by reduced U-report and complaint volume through increased commercial and recreational activity in shared spaces. We can gauge customer and employee sense of safety through direct surveys. We can also measure success through an increased number of public outreach events with local partners and related attendance, through grant application volume, through program signups, and completion from our partners. Success can also be measured through increased participation of businesses across Bloomington, I said this already, not just the downtown and enterprise zone. And finally, success with the enterprise permitting and licensing will be shown through conversion of business licenses to EPL by the end of 2025. Sorry, Susan. Oh, she's not here. We anticipate an increase in compliance, that is, no lapsed licenses, and ease of payment and application. And there will also be reduced staff time in managing that program. So, again, looking at our overall department budget, you can see the bulk of our funding is in salaries, which is category one, and program-related expenses in category three, with our primary funding source being the ED-Lit. ESD has leveraged outside funding through the Trades District CCC grant, which I've already mentioned. I mentioned that costs of TDM will be reimbursed through carbon reduction funding. IEDC will fund the Certified Tech Park via the RDC at a level of $250,000 in the 2025 year. The city will receive reimbursement for converting to LED lighting through a Department of Energy Efficiency Block grant. And finally, we are preparing round two submissions for multiple ready projects, and we are working on multiple state and federal incentives in partnership with the grant sourcing manager, who is housed in the Office of the Controller. In 2025, we will pursue a round of funding for the EPA multi-purpose grant, which replaces the previous Brownfields grant. It is able to do more than just the Phase One and Two assessments. And we will pursue additional opportunities as they become available, especially through the Greenhouse Gas Reduction Fund, the IRA. ESD's 2025 budget positions the city to better serve our residents and constituents. It helps us protect residents from extreme weather. It ensures the city's progress in greenhouse gas reduction. It makes it easier to be a small business owner in Bloomington. And it engages residents through public art and engages artists through our grant-making programs. The 2025 budget request from ESD allows us to focus our activities while capitalizing on the momentum generated by the influx of funding from ARPA and CREED in 2024 and previous years. And with that, I wanted to share -- oh, I'm out of time. This is the proposed mural for the Duke Substation Mural Project, which will go in at 11th and Rogers, and I think we've received public feedback, so I don't know if this is the final design. I'm happy to take your questions.
Thank you. Director Cooper-Smith, we'll go to council questions now for the ESD budget. Councilmember Pete Mountsmith.
Thank you very much for your updates and your report. So I have a few questions related to the priorities in the city council memo issued in June that relate to your department. We had asked, of course, climate action and environment is a top priority of ours, as well as the administration's. So two of our priorities were implement programs as outlined in the Climate Action Plan at similar funding levels as 2024, at minimum, and then maintain support for Project 46. Can you speak to those two? Are those, if we take the full amount going towards climate action, is it at a level of this year? Is it higher? And then what about Project 46?
It's basically on par. Sean and I just went over the numbers before I came into this meeting. So ED-Lit funding is increased to, I think we said, 1.6. And then the general fund is slightly reduced. So there was some trading of programs that didn't get adopted, but the overall amount here, I've got it written down. It's on par, is the answer. And then, yes, there is support in the budget for Project 46, which we agree is extremely important.
Thank you.
Total sustainability in 2025 is $2,072,050 with, yeah. I'll just leave that there.
And then we also had a few goals about encouraging the local food economy and beyond that, just local businesses in general, but in particular, trying to incentivize healthy food sources for people, especially in food deserts. Can you speak to that at all as part of this budget?
I would file that under, yes. I mean, we are, we share that priority. I would file that under the larger economic development strategy because I think we need to evaluate. I mentioned a couple grant programs that are directly funding people working in food insecurity, but I think we need to do a bigger-picture valuation of where the gaps are and try to think critically about how we are addressing them. And then you're talking about local businesses adopting local sources of food. I mean, we can, we can work on that. I'm sorry, that feels like an inadequate answer, but when I think about this, it's contextualized in the work that Rachel Byer did when she was here on the grant, working on local food purchasing. So the whole purpose of that, I think it was a USDA grant, I think she was here three years, was to try to get institutions to purchase local food. So ESD has done a lot of this work. We have a lot of this information. The main output of that grant was the establishment of the Farm Stop on West Kirkwood. So I kind of feel like we've gotten part of the way there, and I look forward to doing more.
Thank you.
Good time. Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you so much for the presentation and all the work that went into this year's budget and all the work y'all do. First was with a question about the kind of programmatic funding on the Climate Action Plan implementation. We've had great updates from Sean Mia a few times, and some of the programs that involve financing or reliance on folks to be willing to finance or otherwise contribute have struggled with uptake, which is not unique to us. You know, ask any green bank, and they'll tell you that that's a challenge, right? But what I'm curious about is, we allocate certain amounts of money for those programs, uptake, and also it's worth noting, we're integrating and evolving those programs to be responsive to some of the implementation challenges, which I appreciate. But my question is, if we don't spend all the money that's allocated in those, what happens to those funds at the end of the year? Are they repurposed for different Climate Action Plan implementation purposes? Do they revert to the general fund? What's been happening with that?
Oh, just a couple points. One, I think we're doing an excellent job of iterating the programs, and so those requirements for financing are no longer present for any of our programs, right?
They may be appropriate in some cases, of course. I'm not.
No loans required. So I think that's a great just first step. And then, secondly, when we get toward the end of the year, if it doesn't seem like a program's getting adopted, we either try to allocate the funding so that it can be utilized the following year, or we can use it for a different purpose, as long as it's in the same category, basically. So Sean is just really tenacious with her budget, and she doesn't let a penny slip away from climate if there's a way to avoid it. So she has really good, I don't know what that rate would be called, but application of the funds.
Sounds good. And yeah, maybe some follow-up conversation would be helpful, but I appreciate that answer. The second question is about the community, action plan for community priorities that have been talked about throughout the budget. There's one for economic development, and it's your goal one you mentioned. I'm curious if you've thought through councilmember involvement. For instance, Councilmember Asari is on a number of economic development commissions in the development of plans, but then also whether or not these plans are going to come to the council for input, adoption formally, like, can you speak more to that?
I don't have a formal response to that yet, but I anticipate having an answer for that shortly, and definitely yes to engagement, especially with, well, with all of you, but I've already talked with Councilmember Asari about it a few times, and yeah, anticipate visibility, partnership.
Okay. Great.
Okay. I'll take one. Okay, I'll take one. I've got some specific ones, but I'm going to save those to correspond with you. But I've been thinking about sustainability. Back 20 years ago, when I was proposing sustainability within the city of Bloomington, I envisioned moving away from simply evaluating economic well-being in terms of growth. Like, growth was sort of, many things were shoehorned into growth. People thought growth was either benign or beneficial. But it occurs to me that, just globally speaking, if we're going to play our part with reducing carbon, as much as the world's tried in the last decade, it's been pursued by growth. Growth has exceeded, has increased carbon emissions. So all of the implementation of alternative energy, conservation measures, switching to alternative fuels and things like that, have all been made up for in terms of the growth, increasing materials and energy. So it occurs to me that at a local level, we have to reconcile this, too. So if we're going to grow as a community, it means we're going to have a larger carbon footprint. So we're sort of trying to catch up, we're trying to continually try to catch up to a situation which we'll never do if we continue just expanding. So now, we're an open system. The world's a closed system, but Bloomington's an open system, so I get it. We're going to have people moving in and out. There's a lot of people who would like to attract business, but I think that one way in which, and I'm happy to see you talk about local businesses, because one way we could think about development rather than growth is in relocalization. So, following up on Councilmember Pete Mount Smith's question, we spend about a half a billion dollars a year on food in Bloomington. That's a huge amount to capture if we were to produce it locally. So I want, in the 42 seconds remaining, sorry, that's a long-winded question. But do you see this as a priority and a potential, I mean, potential for economic development? It's a huge.
Yeah. I mean, I think there's enormous potential there. It's a big question. I'm not sure how to dig in. I would say, what do we talk about when we're talking about growth? I mean, we can talk about wage growth. We can talk about growth of the boundaries of our community. We can talk about growth and assessed value. We can talk about growth and the number of business starts. So I think there's a lot of room in there to foster the kind of growth that is beneficial. And then to food, yeah, we're here for it.
There is a big opportunity.
It's personally super important.
Okay. Thank you for that. Part of my question was rhetorical, of course. Other questions from council? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public. The public would like to comment on the ESD budget for 2025. Please step up and identify yourself, and you have two minutes.
All right. Good evening. My name is Jen Pearl, and I'm the president of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, speaking in support of the ESD investments considered this evening. We did want to highlight how ESD has really been a great partner, and we really appreciate the entire staff. We regularly collaborate with them on business retention, expansion, and attraction efforts, as well as site readiness. Our overall goal is to help diversify our unemployment base and help raise wages in our community while convening partners around needs for economic development, like those I highlighted in my email to you recently. Also highlighting items for growth, we really talk a lot about economic vitality. So how do we better help people in our community access better jobs, better wages, housing that helps them improve their lives for them and their families, as well as quality of place and quality of life? And so to that end, we very much appreciate all of the collaboration we've had with ESD and look forward to continuing to support their efforts moving forward. Thank you.
Is there anyone online?
If anyone would like to make a comment, we'll pursue you.
You can do so by raising your hands, using the reactions tab or the more tab. At this time, I don't see any hands raised.
Last chance for the gallery. Anyone like to make a comment? Okay, seeing no one online still. We'll come back to council for final comment on the ESD budget. Councilmember Daley and then Stossberg.
Thank you for that presentation. That was great, and I just want to say that, excuse me, I am absolutely in love with the idea that, you know, the arts is receiving some love in this and that it's one of the goals. And I'm going to encourage that we look even into greater investment, right, in blossoming the creative economy here in Bloomington. I really want to lean deeper into broadening that arts sector in Bloomington. There was a comment within the packet that quoted "great gains in efficiency were made in the creation of constellation stage and screen," and I take a little bit of argument with that because efficiency doesn't foster creativity. I don't think that is actually a good thing to advertise that statement because efficiency in the arts reduces creativity. So we want to expand and diversify that and encourage more voices and representation. In 2012, the Americans for the Arts did a study of arts and economic prosperity, and I know this was 12 years ago, but it found that arts and cultural activities in Bloomington generated almost $72.3 million in direct expenditures annually. And then that number translates into an estimated 3,430 full-time equivalent jobs for the community. And that is done every several years, that study. I don't know that it's been done in Bloomington since then, but every year it still finds that the arts is a huge contributing factor to a local economy. So creating greater diversity and different types of events are really vital, and so I just really want to encourage that we look into that and find unique ways and special events that will draw greater audiences, you know, from maybe even a wider geographic breadth, because they'll appeal to more people, right? So there are things that we can do, like immersive installations and performances, theater festival, pop-up performances. And very importantly, I also want to say that I hope that we'll use maybe all of Bloomington's geography to benefit local businesses outside of downtown. We could really do really amazing, neat things. We have such an amazing, I keep using the word amazing, but we just have such a creative community, and this is such the right place to really draw on the expertise of all of the artists who live in here. So we can use our influence for good to help all of the businesses around Bloomington. And so in that updated study, I just wanted to add also that, in fact, according to the U.S. Bureau of Economic Analysis, the nation's arts and entertainment sector, nonprofit and commercial, is 44, no, that's way too much, 4.4% of the nation's economy, which is larger than sectors such as construction, transportation, and agriculture. So we have a really great opportunity here. Sorry.
Thank you.
Further council comment? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. I wanted to reflect on and make a request also with respect to the action plans for community priorities. A, that they should have council member participation, ideally like maybe one member participating in each plan, and then also an opportunity for engagement with the whole membership at appropriate levels, like nearing drafts, you know, end of a draft stage, for instance. And then also that we have formal council approval for them. I don't think they were called out in some at the beginning of the budget book, but I've scanned through and I've seen public safety, street homelessness, community safety, economic development, infrastructure, facilities, and housing, all called out. I appreciated your answer, Director Cooper Smith, about the collaboration on the Economic Development Action Plan. And last night, Deputy Mayor Knapp likened those plans to being somewhat analogous to our comprehensive plan, transportation plan, climate action plan, when Councilmember Rosenberg was asking about those. And I think it's worth noting that those did all come to the council for formal adoption, approval, had our involvement and feedback. And I think, first of all, that's just living into our values that, you know, I think we share on the council and the mayor states of collaborating and co-creating solutions. But second, and like pragmatically, maybe more critically, I think it's what's needed to achieve buy-in so that, you know, we're not working at cross purposes, so that when funding is needed, legislation is needed, the council's on board. And I think there's been a few examples where that hasn't happened, and it leads to more headaches than are necessary. And so like the Hopewell Master Plan is an example of that. The mayor and deputy mayor at the time, under the Hamilton administration, chose not to, the council was involved, we were like on the steering committee or something, but it didn't come to the council for approval, the final plan. And somewhat famously, to me anyway, Councilmember Volin, who's in the room, asked the deputy mayor, why not? And they said, because we don't have to. And then, a couple years later, they came to us with the plat for the, you know, and a request to vacate right-of-way in the Hopewell neighborhood, and the plan didn't have alleys. And like, turns out, we wanted alleys. We thought they were an important part of urban form. We denied that request. It led to a lot of extra work for everybody and a longer process so that we could get the council buy-in and support for what could have had our support all along, but didn't. And then some of the, you know, we found out that, I think, a day before the consensus building activity we were hosting, that a housing action plan had been developed for street homelessness. And I don't think, I certainly wasn't aware of that in advance. And Mary Morgan from the Heading Home Coalition emailed us as council members just recently and sort of requested we stop, you know, taking input and so much as act, follow the housing action plan. And we might get there, I think we will, but it's, when we don't have buy-in and we don't know about it, it's hard to just fully endorse these things. There might be things we disagree with, things that we think are needed that aren't in the plan. And so I think, I've just observed these things, both this administration, past administration, there are missed opportunities, and I hope we don't go down that path with the action plans for community priorities. So thank you.
Further council comment? Councilmember Stossberg.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty, for those words. I appreciate those. And thank you, Director Cooper Smith, for your presentation. I just want to call out that I emailed a list of questions that were so kindly already totally answered in my email, and I will put those in ESOC's shared list, both the questions and the answers. And I was just honestly kind of surprised when I read through this budget, realizing like all the different pieces of this department of economic and sustainable development because they don't all seem necessarily to have like obvious connections to each other, and they're all like under this one umbrella, having to get processed and dealt with. So that was, that was just kind of interesting to discover all of the pieces of this department, which I thought were mostly about business development, but in fact, it really is about just a much wider range of issues that get dealt with by this department every day. So that's mostly what I wanted to say in terms of thinking about what actually gets done in that office and the different things that get captured under that umbrella. So thank you very much for all your work.
Councilmember Pete Mount Smith?
Yeah, I just wanted to say for the benefit of the public that I did have a productive meeting several weeks ago with members of this department and I think a couple of other departments regarding micro-mobility, in other words, the e-scooters, and bringing forward concerns that I've heard from many, many constituents about the e-scooters getting in the way of pedestrians and people with mobility issues on our sidewalks. And I think the department is taking these concerns seriously, and it's helpful to know that, that the director of Transportation Demand Management, who is housed in this department, is taking charge of this issue and has been talking to the scooter companies, and they are considering some ways in which the city can have tighter control over how our right-of-way is used by these e-scooters. And I think we'll be hearing more about that in the coming months, so I just wanted to mention that because a lot of people have come to me with concerns. I think we have some revisions in the works that should improve the situation.
Further council comment? Councilmember Asari, do you have anything you'd like to say? Put you on the spot.
Much of the presentation.
You can watch it at home later on. Okay, I'm just going to say a few things to build on what I said earlier, which is, I think that targeting small businesses is a really wonderful way in which we diversify our economy and we can, you know, build resilience into our community. But I wonder if we should, in a way of targeting investment for import substitution, which is a fancy term for can we recirculate dollars in the community as a way of building wealth, if we could undergo some sort of study to do that? In other words, when I think of economic vitality, which I like to hear, I'm thinking of building wealth and building people's, raising the wage floor and so forth. But there's, I think there's a huge opportunity here for economic development, and it's already happening. It's not as though it's not happening, but we could, we could focus on that. I know that it's, very often, communities try to attract employers from outside, and they give benefits and tax deductions and things like that. But I think that maybe if we were to shift to exploring sectors of the economy that we could develop, where we could give micro-loans and so forth, and try to build, build that kind of diversity that we need. I mean, if only because, you know, as I said, we need to have a different approach toward climate change. A lot of it involves transportation of goods into communities from elsewhere. There's all this embedded energy that is, you know, essentially expressed in any good that you buy from elsewhere, and a lot of it has to do with transportation. If we can do things locally, if we can preserve farmland, develop employment opportunities for local food production, and then build resilience in times of shortages potentially as well. I think that that is something that I see communities doing across the country, and I think Bloomington is really well-placed to do that. And I think there's already a large number of people, we have three farmers' markets, a large number of people who would like that opportunity to support their local growers. Okay, if there's nothing else, then thank you very much for that presentation. And we will move on now. We're in the departmental budget hearings for 2025 for the city of Bloomington, and we'll move on to the Parks and Recreation budget.
All right, good evening. My name is Tim Street. I am the administrator of the Parks and Recreation Department. Pleasure to be here with you tonight. I look forward to trying to give you a little cross-section of what we're doing and what we're looking to do in 2025 tonight. With me in the room tonight are a few Parks and Rec staff members that are really key. Becky Higgins is our Recreation Division Director. Satoshi Kido is our Sports Director, and Rebecca Swift is our new Operations Director, though she's been with us for five years before that as our Natural Resources Coordinator. So she has stepped into the role that I formerly occupied. Make sure I'm working here. So it's my great privilege to lead this department, and we get to do a lot of really great things to try to make life in Bloomington better. We get to provide and maintain the city's parks, trails, facilities, natural spaces, our urban forest, all while we offer programs to help residents explore, play, and connect. And I choose those words intentionally. That is actually a tagline that we introduced to our department earlier this year, Explore, Play, Connect. You'll find it on my email signature. And I think our staff did a really great job of choosing that because it really encapsulates a lot of the things that we exist to do. Our staffing levels are stable from last year to this year in the salary ordinance. There are 65 full-time staff and around 62 temporary staff. 25 of those are union and 40 are non-union. And just to give you a representative sample of what that temporary staff number means, for our last complete year, that meant 382 unique temporary staff, lifeguards, coaches, landscapers, laborers, custodians, you name it, we've got it. Our key programs, we have the Operations Division, which is really responsible for maintaining, developing projects, cleaning, taking care of our public spaces. The Recreation Division does all manner of community events, programming, and oversees Switchyard Park, the Banneker Center, and the Allison Jukebox. Our Sports Division operates our sports facilities, our pools, our ice arena, the Cascades Golf Course, the Twin Lakes Rec Center, and various sports fields and leagues like Winslow and Twin Lakes Sports Park. And then our Admin and Community Relations supports our overall operations and also helps us interact and communicate effectively with the public. I want to highlight some quick successes. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the Eclipse. It was a huge success for us. I was very proud of our department in the way we were able to represent Bloomington to the greater world that descended upon us. We had about 8,000 people in Switchyard Park enjoying some Pink Floyd and Eclipse. It was a wonderful event. I think we had people I think we had people from probably 30-plus states, and a lot of them, we talked to, said they found us because they Googled and they found our programming we were doing, and they came to us because of that. We launched the new Bryant Park Playground this summer, that was an investment from 2023 ARPA dollars. We launched two new solar installations, I think their numbers, 33 and 34 for the city, if I'm not mistaken, or something close to that. One is at the Switchyard Maintenance Building, which is pictured there, and the other is at the Cascades Golf Course. We're in the midst of building a picnic shelter at RCA Park right now, that will be done this fall. We've had great success with some grants this year. I want to particularly thank Jonas Chang in the Controller's Office, who has just been instrumental in helping us with grants. The most recent which is going to help us, a grant from DNR to help us replace the front limestone steps at the Banneker Center. New turf at TLRC went in to start the year. We've had all manner of great concerts, events, the farmer's market celebrating its 50th year. We had two great community concerts with Visit Bloomington. The Griffey South Shore officially launched this year, though it had been some years in the making. It's an absolute gem for our community to have that. We've been able to do a lot of really great accessibility projects this year through ARPA funding, collaborating with the CCA. Their input has been invaluable. We've been able to purchase a minibus to help participants with disabilities or mobility needs more fully participate in programming at different places, an accessible golf cart at Switchyard Park. I'm really excited, we're going to be installing a tactile map at Switchyard Park here before the end of the year, or maybe early 2025, which is a universal map that people with visual impairments can use. Very excited to add that. Thank you to ESD for the support for the Stay Cool Pool Days. You saw Director Cooper Smith's number that about 11,000 people were able to go to the pool for free on our hottest days. We integrated all of our parks' assets into GIS and City Works this year, which has been a long-term, long-term goal of ours. Storm response, our staff did a tremendous job. Our Urban Forestry Division is actually still responding to storm damage, and will be for some time yet. There are challenges. Climate change is certainly one of them, and we're, we're on the front line in both in sometimes feeling the effects of climate change and also enacting changes for it. Summer storms have become a regular distraction, I guess I'll say, or detriment to the normal work we're trying to get done, when we lose hundreds of hours to responding to storm cleanup. Growth seasons have been wild, trying to keep up with our vegetation or keep it alive when it inevitably swings towards hot and dry, like it is right now. Aging facilities, we're going to talk a little bit more about that in our goals. System growth, we've had a lot of system growth for the last five, six, seven years, Switchyard Park, the bicentennial bond projects, Hopewell Commons coming online, they're all great things, but we have to really spend time working on how we maintain these assets. And then behavior impacts, graffiti, vandalism, encampments, messes, needles, and just general behavior. Our staff spend a lot of time dealing with this, and a lot of our resources dealing with this, that could otherwise go to other things, but this is a frontline, important duty for us, and I really want to shout out to our staff that are so dedicated that clean up messes and take care of graffiti on a, on a daily basis. I want to be careful not to conflate this entirely with street homelessness, of course there is some correlation, but there's also people who just behave poorly, and that is a part of it, too. We do have a security contract as a result, this is definitely something I wanted to highlight. Our spending on security has increased, largely just because things have gotten more expensive, with a few strategic scope increases over the years, but almost $400,000 of our budget next year is going to security. And again, those are dollars that could otherwise be focused on, you know, potentially more mission-related activities. That said, security is an essential service for us right now, they are very important for us, they're making really good interventions, and I'm quite certain that they have saved multiple lives over the years that they have been working for us, because they're checking on people who otherwise are not being checked on. Needles, we get a lot of reports and complaints from the public about needles in parks. That 2024 number is actually a little over 3,000 now, I just got an update from my staff today. So, you know, we find to pick up about 4,000 needles in parks a year. So, it is an epidemic and it is ongoing. That said, we have lots of great opportunities as well. We got some great trail connections coming, which is something we get asked for a lot. We have a public meeting coming up, and we'll be building the Power Line Trail next year. We're looking at ways to extend the Beeline between its southern terminus and the Limestone Greenway and Clear Creek Trail to the south. The Beeline North is coming online next year from the Engineering Department. I mentioned already, accessibility improvements, building trades will happen into 2025 with those ARPA funds from this year. We're looking at further improvements to the Griffey North Shore Trail, just like we did to the South Shore, as we wrap up some of the bicentennial bonds and end up with fund balances there. You can probably expect to hear from us on that. And we're really looking for grants and other opportunities to build an accessible trail, a fully accessible trail at Griffey, to, to more fully give residents the chance to enjoy the gem that Lake Griffey is. Hopewell Commons is a huge opportunity, it's a beautiful new urban park for us and an anchor for that neighborhood development. And then 2025 master planning is a really big opportunity for us this next year, too. These are our goals. We obviously kind of changed things up this year with how we present these, and instead of presenting, you know, each, each of our areas' individual strategic goals, trying to theme these, I will say, in trying to create themed goals that I felt were relevant as a report to council, they have varying degrees of direct general fund impact for 2025, and I'll kind of address that as we go through. Our budget for 2025 is overall down a little bit from last year. Personnel Services is up a little bit, basically in line with the cost of living adjustment that's gone in. Our Supplies is minorly down, just accounting for a few odd changes in projects here and there. And then our Other Services is up a little bit. The changes that really can account for in other services that are major for 2025 include the master plan, which you're going to hear about, security increases, and we have a specific project to repair a bunch of security cameras that have gone down on us as well. I just talked about these. I will note, capital is down, we certainly are going to miss ARPA funds, they have been a great asset for us to get some project work done, and that is why our capital number is, is down between 2024 and 2025. Okay, getting into goals. Number one, the Parks Department operates on a five-year master plan, as with most other parks' departments in the country. This is key to us gathering community feedback to drive priorities and investments. Our current plan is expiring next year, and I'm very much looking forward to a public engagement process next year to determine our new priorities and sort of get our new marching orders from the community. The direct budget impact for 2025 is about $127,000. This will help us hire consultants with expertise both in master planning, but also specifically to help us get representative and statistically significant community feedback, representative of the community as a whole, as well as to conduct some focus groups, feedback groups, things like that. It's important for us because it helps us know, you know, competing priorities are a challenge for us, we have people ask us for different things all the time. We can't do all the things that we get asked to do, so it's important for us to get that feedback, so we can identify what is it that the community really wants to see us do. And sometimes it's just as helpful for us to help know what we should say no to, as it is what we should say yes to. Timeline for this goal is to do our requests for proposals this fall, implement in early 2025, and hopefully have our final plan by mid-2025, quarter three, 2025. This will obviously involve significant public feedback. Our second goal is to activate Hopewell Commons and the Beeline, sort of two goals wrapped into one, but they are very related. Hopewell Commons construction will be reaching substantial completion here before the end of the year. There are still some issues for us to address and figure out in terms of timing, we're going into the winter, there's going to be some final completion items needed. So, we're probably in all likelihood looking at activation really in 2025, especially since winter is not the time that we're typically going to, you know, drive a lot of people to parks. Activation and positive use is key for any new park, but especially here, given that we're still waiting for the surrounding development to come around the park. Significantly here, there is not a corresponding general fund budget request on Hopewell Commons for 2025. While we estimate the park's going to take an estimated 100 to 120K in annual upkeep as it gets going, we won't realize that all the first year, these funds for 2025 are being budgeted in the park's non-reverting account. So, the parks has both a separate general fund account from the rest of the city, based on statute, and we also have a non-reverting account, which is where we perform business initiatives that come from revenue other than taxpayer revenue. In talking with ESD, Legal, the Controller Administration, we are looking at ways to recapture some operational costs for this park and green space from the developments that go in immediately around it, since there is such a benefit to having this green space right there. And so, for the time being, because we are looking at those as a potential reimbursement to the cost, we are budgeting these costs as they will slowly increase as we take on more with Hopewell in our non-reverting account. That said, you know, eventually, this, this is a public park, eventually it is, will need to be in the general fund, and I want to make that known to you now. Outcomes, you know, a new urban park as an anchor for development and community connection. One of our main outputs will be programming events. So, in addition to, you know, what we'll certainly have an event when it's complete, when we're opening it, a grand opening. Becky in our Rec Division has talked about programming two to four direct, you know, significant events there next year, community concerts, we, it's, it's a lot like People's Park in the things we can do with it, but we can do a lot more with it, especially as the development comes around it. So, concerts, art fairs, things like that, that we can use to activate this space in 2024, or '25, excuse me. We'll know we're successful, we use things like Placer AI and crowd counts to kind of go through and see how we are drawing people to a park, and hopefully, as the development does begin to come through ESD and other departments in 2025, we gradually get to see that engagement and that activity in the park increase. Before I move on, I do need to mention that the Beeline activation as well, this is related to the mayor, when she took office, went to NYU's Institute for Urban Design for mayors, and we have some consulting to help us look at ways to activate the Beeline and make it a more vibrant and active morning to night, really center of activity for Bloomington, especially between the critical city projects that we've had lately, Switchyard Park, Hopewell Commons, the Trades District, and the Convention Center. We don't have specific outcomes identified there yet, but this is something we are looking at with Hopewell Commons, with administration through this consulting, to find more ways to integrate, particularly, we want to make sure the trail has the opportunity to integrate with the Convention Center as it advances. So, more to come on that. We very much need to develop a sports facilities capital plan. Bryant Park, 1959, Mills Pool, 1967, Frank Southern, 1967, and Winslow Sports Park are all facing challenges due to age. We're already gathering info on this goal. We found out from a consultant that the Frank Southern Center has the last cooling system of its kind on the continent. That is not a mark of notoriety that I care to have, and something we really need to look at. So, this will also help us consider community requests for various facilities, we hear at pickleball, tennis, soccer, there's, there's a lot of demands that are competing that we need to work on addressing. So, that's why this goal is very much directly involved with our master plan surveying next year, so we can use that community feedback to build our master plan, and at the same time, work with the Controller, looking at funds and options to develop this sports facilities capital plan. Around $100,000 is budgeted in direct items already in the 2025 budget, things we have to take care of, and we are working with the Controller to identify a few other key items for 2025 that we think will be yet to come. I know there was discussion last night about a potential capital bond. We definitely anticipate more capital facilities needs coming up, just to maintain what we have with the old infrastructure. The benefit of doing this is there's positive outcomes on all fronts. Accessibility is poor, we can make it better. Inclusion, such like binary restrooms, is poor, we can make it better. User safety, energy efficiency, sustainability, and improved user experience, we can tap into all of those fronts when we're looking at making these more efficient and better for the community. This will be throughout 2025. Green space and climate resiliency, difficulty hiring, climate change, damaging summer storms, I mentioned, have all pulled us away and have made it hard to keep up with our urban green space. We have three areas that really deal with this, it's our natural resources area, which is our natural areas and our nature preserves, like Griffey Lake and Leonard Springs, urban green space, which takes care of landscaping and parks and other places, and urban forestry, which takes care of our urban forests. Some outcomes there that we're looking at are contracting care of the downtown and Kirkwood planters. You'll note, this is not in the general fund request, and that is because we have been talking with Public Works about using parking meter funds to do this. We remain committed to natives, we have been a longstanding community that is committed to native plants and the benefits. But we've heard from the downtown folks and other folks around town, not just downtown folks, that they want to see us do better with some of the downtown planners. And contracting that out will allow us to ease the burden on our staff and maintain those to a higher standard. We're working on a 10-year urban forestry pruning cycle, year three of our calorie pair replacement 15-year plan, bicentennial tree planting, 380 trees going in, that'll bring us up to about 1,200 from the bicentennial plan in various ways. And we're also looking to achieve Bee City USA status, which would require council action later on, similar to Tree City USA status. Our last goal, we always hear from residents that they want us to work on connectivity and accessibility. We have a lot of projects going right now, no new direct general impact, general fund impact in 2025, but these are all things going on that, that may develop in the future that I wanted council to be aware of. We have a federal grant in right now to design the Beeline South connection between the Beeline terminus at Country Club and the Limestone Greenway, positioning us to connect to statewide trail efforts in the future. We're going to work with the Epley Center and CCA on a new Essential Experience Accessibility Survey, the Power Line Trail project running west from Switchyard Park, completing the ARPA projects that I've mentioned, the North Shore and Accessible Trails, these all tick those boxes and will help us to work with CCA. Our budget, as mentioned, is right at 12.2 million, a little bit down from last year. And in conclusion, I think the 2025 budget for us is really about a stable platform from which to really look at our planning after a period of growth of, how can we be sustainable, how can we take care of these things, how can we elevate our standards while still planning for contingencies like behavior issues in parks, like climate change? We're lucky to be on the forefront of climate change, positive enhancements for the city, too, and all in all, continuing to contribute to the fabric of Bloomington and making our community more livable, more fun, and helping people explore, play, and connect. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Street. Your timing is impeccable. It's amazing how you pack that all in. Okay, we'll go to council for questions. Okay, hands over here. Councilmember Rosenberger.
Hi, thanks for the presentation, and also great Bug Fest this weekend. Question about the Beeline, these are like, kind of just small, but just triggered from what you said. Trees, you know, I mean, you're talking about planting trees in our urban area in general, but the Beeline is so hot, right? And are there any plans to shade it over time?
Yes, as part of our urban forestry efforts, Haskell Smith, our urban forester, basically with the bicentennial bond over the last few years, has looked to put trees anywhere he can. That has included, we ended up actually amending Title 12 to allow us, last year, to more easily put trees back where they'd gone out, because there was actually a utility restriction that was keeping us from putting trees back in some certain places. And that's part of those 1,200 trees that have gone in. Unfortunately, sometimes we've gone in, like, we took the calorie pairs out between Third Street and Fourth Street.
Oh, right, right.
A necessary step, but it definitely reduced the shade until those new trees come in. We'll continue to look for wherever we can.
Okay, great. Does Parks and Rec consider edible landscaping when we're talking about natives and just keeping up, right, with planting in our common spaces? I know a lot of other countries do it, and a lot of other cities do it, and it's, I think, a great way to incorporate some like, climate action plan, and local food, and just like, accessibility of food for folks.
Mm-hmm. Yes, and we have experimented with that a little bit in the past. Obviously, we do have the partnership with Bloomington Community Orchard that operates at Winslow Woods, which is somewhat doing what you're describing for the community, though not on the accessible scale that I think you're, you're after. They also, a few years ago, did an experiment with sort of some fruit and nut trees across the street in Winslow Sports Park, and we kind of rely on some volunteerism for that, and it ended up not really going anywhere. There are some reasons why fruit and nut trees typically don't work well as street trees, because of the demands of, the rigorous demands of the street environment, road salt, five-by-five tree plots, things like that, reasons why those might not work as well there. But in the right context, with the right partner, it could be something we could look at.
I think, too, like carrots and potatoes, I mean, all the things, you know, are possible. Thank you. And I know fruit and nut can be difficult, too, for like, dropping things on streets and sidewalks and everything. Accessibility for Griffey, do we have a bus line that goes there?
I, no, there is not a bus line that goes to Griffey right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Daley? Councilmember Daley.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. Just out of curiosity, when you were talking about the security, and you mentioned, you know, they're checking in on people who maybe not normally get checked in on, do they carry Narcan? Do you know?
They typically have Narcan available in their trucks.
Okay.
I believe.
Okay.
Yes, I would need to double check that, but that is my understanding with our security contractor right now.
Super. Okay, that was what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Street and Parks Department. Excited about all the trails and accessibility focus that has remained strong for many years backed by the survey data that y'all collect, which I also really appreciate that innovation and when that came in. Of course, the trails are also great for recreation, also really important, safe and sustainable transportation infrastructure in our community. And I think some of the connections y'all are highlighting will help, like the Summit Development access the Beeline and have non-automotive, you know, options that are accessible for folks. So that's awesome. This is, what I'm going to ask about isn't new, and, but in the last few regular sessions, we've been reminded by a member of the public that since 2001, we have had a plan to connect Bloomington North High School to the Miller Showers Park and the broader, you know, downtown and neighborhood ecosystem. I think in particular with Walnut and College getting overhauled and having potentially safe infrastructure as well, to get to that point, it becomes only more compelling that we need to be able to finalize the last segments of a lot of the works that Parks has done over the years, which I think has been done in reverse order from what was called for in some of the plans. But obviously, you know what I'm talking about, the gap between Miller Showers Park and about where the little kind of, well, near the playground in Cascades Park, right? So we don't have a all ages and abilities way to get to Bloomington North High School. The council actually committed to making that connection via resolution in 2018. There was a group of high school students that came forward, the Yes Society Coalition, and countless other plans. It's not, there's multiple options. We could convert the street to a multi-use path. We could close one lane of the street and convert the other side to a multi-use path. We could build a multi-use path, which includes losing more trees and some stream bank stabilization, or we could pursue other options. Where is Parks on this? Like, is this still in your vision for what you're doing? Have there been conversations about what we should pursue, how we're going to make that decision, because it's kind of been on hold?
It is. It is in our overall capital facilities plan that we have out there. So I think you're referencing the Cascades system, which has been built, and I can't speak to the order it was built in or why certain sections were built. I think some of it was taking advantage of federal road funding as things were happening in those areas. So Phase Four would be, I think, what you're talking about from the high school sort of to Cascades Golf Course. There is a sort of a preliminary figure design out there. I was not aware of the 2018 resolution. That's good background info. And then what we would call Phase Six, which is, you know, between Miller Showers and as far as we got with the last phase, Phase Five. Both of those, with the front half of this year, with new administration, with new planning director just coming in, have not received a lot of discussion as immediate priorities, but remain on our capital list as things we need to discuss with the planning director. And, you know, if you have advocacy for that too, would love to listen and further discuss how we can get those done.
Thank you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I had a question about your use of, your partnership with Centerstone for supportive employment. Could you talk a little bit about that program and whether it's expanding next year and what the success has been?
Sure. So I couldn't tell you how many years we've been partnering with Centerstone, but it's at least five, maybe six. As long as the Brighton Bee Town Crew's been going as well, we've had our crews going. We use Centerstone in a few different ways, and it's evolved over the years. In past years, we've used them as employment opportunities to work alongside our parks, operations, and custodial crews. We are still doing that to this day. We have a Centerstone crew that works with the staff every day. They help with things like tidying playgrounds. They help at places like Seminary Park in the morning. And then we also have a crew at Switchart Park that helps with cleanup, helps specifically with the spray pad restrooms, with cleaning those and monitoring those throughout the day, especially with some of the challenges we've had in those restrooms. And then in past years, it's not so much in addition, but a shift to next year. We had done landscaping in the past, and we just weren't getting people from Centerstone who were interested in doing landscaping work, sort of part of our greater challenge of fulfilling those landscaping jobs. And so we've actually shifted some funding, and we have a little bit more in our operations budget next year, instead of our urban green space budget, to continue that partnership. It's a wonderful partnership. It has great results for the people in the program. We would love to continue it, and I know Director Wason and I have plans to talk this fall about how we just continue to synergize those efforts going forward.
So do you expect to be able to place approximately the same number of Centerstone employees as this year?
Yes.
Okay. My other question had to do with the Hopewell Commons being budgeted in a Parks non-reverting account. So I saw only one fund in the list, which is the Parks General Fund. Is, what does it mean? There's a separate account? Is this a sub-account or something?
So the Parks Non-Reverting Fund is a separate fund that is maintained and controlled by the Board of Park Commissioners. And those are revenues that are not general fund revenues. They are not, so they're like user fees that are paid, for example, or other reimbursable expenses. Because we are looking at this as a potential reimbursable expense and something that may get paid, like a park impact fee from developers, that is why, in talking with the Controller, we've decided to place that in the non-reverting account this year.
I'd like to understand better who controls this account, how much is in it? Can we maybe get that information?
Sure. That's probably a longer answer than I could give right now.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Stossberg.
Thank you so much, and thank you for this presentation. So I first want to say, I also emailed several questions earlier, and I appreciate that a lot of them were actually addressed in the presentation. And I just want to highlight one category that wasn't addressed, and I don't expect you to address it now, but I'm really looking forward to that written answer later. And that is, I just, I appreciated the way that your budgets were laid out in terms of categorizing the different programs that Parks manages and then totaling each of those programs. For example, how much it costs to operate Mills Pool, how much it costs to operate Bryant Park Pool, the golf course, et cetera. And one of my questions had to do with how much revenue it was that those different programs then generated. And so I'm looking forward to seeing that spreadsheet of the different revenues from those different programs that have some revenue attached to them, like the pools and like the athletic stuff and like Frank Southern Center, all of those pieces. And I'm looking forward to that, not because I, you know, I want to make sure they break even, it's that I want to understand how much we are actually like subsidizing different programs in Parks. And I think Parks are amazingly important, and I, our parks system is amazing, but I think that it's really important that we as council members and also the public understand like what, how much public money is actually going to fund those. So I just wanted to say that as I'm looking forward to that answer to be published, I guess, next week as part of those written questions. And the one that I want to ask you about now goes back to the parks security officers. And I was just wondering if you could tell a little bit more about how those security officers that are kind of under the parks budget interact with our police department, who are also security officers in some sense? And just tell us more about that, because it feels like two different categories of people doing maybe the same thing.
Sure. And, you know, I certainly think the need for security is related to a shortage of officers. And in an ideal world, if we had full officers, maybe we wouldn't need security, or we would need, at least have a reduced need for security in our parks. But they are our frontline eyes out there, looking at parks, helping to enforce rules, helping to intervene when maybe there are inappropriate behaviors, sort of a first-line response. There are situations that they get into that go beyond what they can reasonably do. They are unarmed. We do not have armed security officers. And so they have a relationship with BPD, particularly some of the leadership folks. You know, there's a day shift supervisor, a night shift supervisor, and they may call BPD to report certain things. But they are much better positioned than our staff to do some of the responding to some of the behaviors and incidents that we see in parks.
Okay, real quick, are they on duty 24 hours a day?
No. I could share the security schedule with you.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Councilmember Rosari.
Thank you so much, Director Street, just for everything that you do and the presentation and, I think, the very clear memo. I'd like to sort of reflect on something that you said at the beginning, which is, you know, thinking about how we're creating this new, we're moving towards a new budgeting methodology. And I'm interested in how difficult you envision that being for Parks. And the reason why I'm asking that question is really that, you know, I think about a lot of the things that you do as being just a baseline, right? This sort of accepted baseline of services that the city provides. How do you envision us moving with your department towards being able to incorporate the whole budget into an outcome base? Because, I mean, here we set lots of goals, but then none of them have budget items, right? So, you know, so we're doing goals, but then it's like, yeah, but we're not funding those, so they're, you know.
Yeah, and I think part of that is our budget is overall very stable from last year and very similar, and that the cost of staffing and doing our programs, the cost of maintaining our parks is and will largely remain the same, right, from year to year. But then there are the different initiatives, the things we're starting, the different projects, new programs that we start, and I think those are the ones that can really get it, you know, outcome-based budgeting, as well as we can always go through and find, you know, climate action as an example. We can absolutely go through and find, you know, the funds that we devote that are related to climate action, purchasing battery equipment, you know, fighting invasives, the amount of hours even. I mean, that's not a dollar amount, but you can quantify a dollar amount from volunteer hours. So there's a lot of breadth to what we do, and a lot of it is repeatable year after year, just because we got to take care of things. There's infrastructure to take care of. But I like finding the broader themes among what we're doing, but I do think those will also somewhat be repetitive. We're always going to have to take care of infrastructure and
Right, exactly.
Climate change and those kind of things.
Which then, so how, and I think you also got at this in the presentation, and thank you for that, but how do we then think about measuring success? You know, is success for Parks, what we did, you know, we did our baseline, or, you know, how do we think about that sort of feedback loop, if you will, that we say, we know that this is working, not just because we did it, but we know that we are doing this well?
Sure. You know, I think using quantitative numbers as much as possible, I'll use the Griffey Deer Browse as an example. You know, we set out to do that. That's related to climate change impacts, overpopulation, deer browse, all of those things. And we're doing a scientific study out there that the result is, if there's fewer deer than these keystone species return at greater heights. And so we're studying that year after year. So that's a micro example, but if we can take that same model and say, well, what are the indicators of success? How do we measure those and then, you know, put those in year after year? Thank you.
Next questioner. Okay, I'll be that questioner. First of all, thanks for that great presentation and all the work that you and your staff do. The downtown planners, you're going to contract those out. Does that mean you're changing the plant composition?
We still plan to, we are committed to natives. We want them to remain native forward.
Okay, good.
Maybe not exclusively 100% all the time, but we want to be committed, and, you know, Joanna, we've talked with her, we want to work with a company that will help us fulfill that vision while elevating the standard.
I think they're outstanding, frankly. I think they're just amazing. So I'm on the opposite side of Christopher M.G. Where is he? He's not here. His ears are burning. So invasives, I'm thinking of the calorie pairs. You mentioned those. And so we've evaluated all the street trees in Bloomington, including those?
All of our inventoried trees, which is street trees and a lot in parks and other various public properties.
And you have a plan to remove them and replace them?
Yes, we started that two years ago. So this is, 2025 will be year three. We've removed about 70 a year, last year and will again this year. So it's a 15-year plan to eliminate, I want to say it was like 1,200 calorie pairs that we had inventoried. And that doesn't count, you know, volunteer invasive removal days of things that are un-inventoried, new starts, things like that too.
Yeah, it's a daunting task. So 15 years is what I was looking for in terms of the projected replacement. Okay, I wanted to address this really astounding and distressing increase in park security related to threats, I guess, hazards. And it's, if it goes, it's almost 400,000 this year, next year, and then it's conceivable it could be 500,000 by 2026. I mean, that's a doubling from 250-something thousand back in 2022. I mean, it's something that we need to address and can't do it in a few seconds here, but in terms of sharp, of needles, do we have Sharpie disposal?
Yes.
Is that distributed around so people could dispose of them properly?
Sure, not everywhere, of course, but I think we have eight or nine Sharpes box in our system in key locations.
Okay. And you say some of this, the need for this is a reflection of lack of police, and if we attend to the police numbers, this might help the situation? Because I assume they're probably, if they encounter something, then they have to call the police officer, it's going to take the police officer
It depends, there's a lot that they assist with and deal with on their own. You know, we get incident reports from them, but I have seen multiple ones where they've initiated lifesaving care.
Oh, really? Okay, good. All right, thank you for that. Is there, are there any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, then we'll go to the public. If anyone in the gallery would like to comment on the Parks and Rec budget for 2025, this is your opportunity, and you may do so online.
Yes, for folks on Zoom, you can use your raise hand feature under the reactions tab or the more tab.
Are we seeing any takers?
No immediate takers.
Okay. All right, let's wait another moment. Okay, let's come back to council then for comments, final comment on this budget. Anyone interested? Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you. Briefly, just to follow up on the point I brought up, I think the council probably does need to take an active step in working with the administration to figure out what our path forward is on creating safe, sustainable transportation infrastructure to Bloomington North High School. We've been committed to it for 23 years, and we still haven't gotten there. Again, one option is to embrace Cascades Park as park and have, yes, accessibility, parking access, but not having a road through the middle of the park anymore, instead using that as a trail. We did run a pilot on that. 171 people took a survey, 70% of them supported that conversion, 30% opposed. We have other data about safety, about accessibility, about parking with that pilot. So it's worth revisiting with the new administration in particular, since they weren't, you know, in office at that time. There are other options, which I highlighted in bringing that up. Also, we could explore a multi-use path along North Kinzer Pike and connect in that to Miller Showers Park. These probably range from half a million dollars to 12 to 15 million dollars on the range of options. So there are trade-offs involved. But again, regardless of where we settle, I feel like we need to not let this linger in perpetuity and revisit, so I'm hopeful that we can find alignment of some kind and, if not this year, see it in the Parks budget next year. So thank you.
Other comments? Councilmember Stossberg.
Thank you. I'm just going to take another minute and just love on parks, because I worked in parks at one point, and I think that city parks departments are just really, really incredibly valuable. But I also want to highlight that $12 million overall budget that we put into parks in this town. And that is a lot of money. And that means, first of all, that it's really important that we do a good job managing that money and investing it in programs and in facilities and making sure that they serve our population well. But we also, as community members, I think then need to use those resources and take advantage of the fact that they're there. And I love, I just want to highlight what Councilmember Rosenbarger said earlier about food plantings and that it doesn't just have to mean fruit and nut trees. And I kind of hesitate to say this right now, but, you know, I walk the Polygroomshaw Trail, which is on the east side, almost every day, at least in part of it, and it was maybe several years ago that I sort of guerrilla planted some black raspberries along the side of that trail. And you know what? They produced a really nice little crop of black raspberries this year. So I just want to put that out there, this possibility in some of these trail systems of having food plants that aren't going to drop, they're not in the way, they're off just enough that they don't, you know, interact badly with people trying to use the trail. But it, you know, it took a minute, but it's, it was really interesting that those finally, you know, after a couple of years made their, themselves known as a really interesting little crop. I hope that somebody else managed to pick them this year, too, besides just me. So anyway, just putting it out there, I just love parks and I just love those natural resources, and they're just really, really important, I think, to the vitality of any community. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Sari.
First, and very briefly, I'm grateful that so many of you are really excited about planting more food in Bloomington. It's something that I know that Councilmember Rallo has been saying for a long time, something that I've said every chance that I can say it, and so, you know, hey, let's make that a priority moving forward. But, but one thing I want to say is, I think, sort of also building off of what Councilmember Stossberg just said, I actually would like to disagree with the point that the, that the parks budget necessarily needs to be stable. I can imagine a world where, not to scare you, where actually we invest 2 million more in parks. Yeah, no, no, I rather meant that you might have thought that I meant the opposite, right? But, and I think that, I think that this is a good, I think, I think the, you know, and I'm saying almost more for Controller McClellan, I think that actually that model where we think about, okay, they're, you know, for example, I think, I'm so sorry, golf courses in Bloomington, for example, whereas in many places around the country, golf courses are a huge suck, like they take a lot of resource and they usually aren't revenue generating. Our Parks Department has done an exceptional job in making our golf courses revenue generating, I think to the tune of like half a million dollars a year or something like that last I checked, but it's good. I mean, I shouldn't, you know, say if I don't know, but the point is, you've done a lot in generating that, and I think that thinking the way that Councilmember Stossberg just said, I think might be an opportunity for us to say, hey, actually, let's invest here because this is an opportunity for us to capture more revenue. Capture is maybe not the right word, to generate more revenue so that we can continue to reinvest those in services for the people of Bloomington. And so to me, that's the promise of an outcome-based model, is that we don't start from the perspective of, you know, everything is just going to be stasis and the goal of our department is just to keep things going because we're doing a good job, but to constantly reevaluate and say, hey, how, you know, what could resource do to really take us to that next level and what is that next level? And so very grateful for your leadership and, you know, I just, I also love on parks. One other just general comment is that, and I've said this almost every presentation, we talk a lot because the mayor has made this a priority in the budget, this concept of engagement. I think we have to be really careful in the budget book, but then also in our practices, that engagement isn't just that, you know, we put something on Facebook or something like that. Like, I think we need to think very carefully about what we mean by engagement and how we'll know that we have done engagement well, so that we create a feedback loop to do better engagement and thinking about who it is that we're trying to engage with and what the outcomes are of that engagement. And so really looking forward to continuing to work with all of the departments and thinking about what that strategy looks like, but I'm so grateful for all your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll make a quick comment. Thanks so much. I think your department is remarkable in all that it does, and there's just too much to say in that regard. I will add on that the idea of fruit and nut trees, I think, could be in the form of a pilot, and we could experiment with that. It certainly would be food for, if nothing else, wildlife. As my colleague, Councilmember Ruff, used to say, any persimmon tree will not go unharvested, guaranteed. But I did want to address this, what I'm hearing is a reiteration of a common theme, and that is that every department in the city, or a lot of the departments, are engaged in, in one way or another, responding to a certain population in the city. And that population is a relatively small number, but is exorbitant, is disproportionately taking a lot of funds that we would be using elsewhere. And I think our constituents want money well spent. So for instance, the police have a 37% increase in calls. We heard from the SED department that there's distress of downtown businesses, which certainly comes at a cost. CFRD does a lot of work related to that population. Now Parks and Rec are having to increase security, and no doubt you're putting a lot of your employees at hazard by picking up needles and so forth. We've been favorable toward harm reduction in the community, but we're distributing needles that we have to pick up later, it seems to me, because they're not being disposed properly. My point is, is not to cast shame on a population, but to say that this money could be better spent, that we're spending money in a reactionary form, and we really need to spend money in a way that's proactive to address people's homelessness, address people's substance addiction, address people's mental health. It comes at a cost, but it's going to come at a cost in any case, including suffering. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your presentation. It was excellent. And we will now move on to Public Works. Where is Adam? Is Adam Wason here? I saw him. Any pinch hitters for Adam Wason? Looks like we're taking a brief recess while we wait for the Director of Public Works. So why don't we take two minutes, three minutes? Okay, we'll reconvene our departmental budget hearings for 2025 and the much anticipated Public Works budget. Welcome.
Thank you.
Director Wason.
Great. Adam Wason, Public Works Director for the City of Bloomington. I was doing some math earlier, and I think this is now my 18th time working on a city budget and either preparing or presenting to the city council, and the ninth time I'll be doing that for the Public Works Department specifically, so I'm always honored to be here, talk about the great things we're doing, talk about the great things we have planned for the future, and just give you some overall real quick 30,000-foot budget highlights for the Public Works Department for 2025. Our combined budget is going to be, across all divisions, just over, just under $33 million at $32,981,000. We do have one request for a new position in the Fleet Services Division and several other part-time positions at Animal Care and Control. Currently about 165 employees across the board, including seasonals, part-time, and interns. For our Public Works Administration Division, small but mighty is how I like to refer to us, we're a small staff of about, of six full-time members, full-time staff members, and three Board of Public Works members. Overall, the Administration Division is working on the big-picture stuff. So we staff the Board of Public Works meeting every two weeks, but then really work with all the divisions on their financial and strategic direction, infrastructure and asset management, among many, many other things. I'll be clicking through these slides pretty quickly. I know you folks all have copies of these, but with our time limitations, I'll try to highlight all the big-picture stuff. So some big things we've been undertaking these last several years. You're going to hear me talk a lot about asset management tonight. I'm going to give you a couple, a real quick overview. Asset management to us is having a software system that can have information about every asset that we're required or responsible for maintaining. So this could be a city street, a sidewalk, a building, a vehicle, a piece of equipment. It could be any number of things that we're responsible for maintaining, and so asset management is a huge part of what we do. We've done a lot of automation with the data sets that we have to get them directly on the Be Clear site. We're working on upgrades for our LED system and our lighting and really working on our accreditation journey with the American Public Works Association. Some of our biggest challenges right now, I've taken several council members on tours, the new administration on tours, we are in desperate need of an upgrade to our facilities. This is something that was begun under the last administration, and now it's really time that we start to provide the facilities for Public Works to meet our needs into the future. We need to continue to increase our investments in the infrastructure we need to maintain. This is roads, traffic networks, sidewalks, et cetera, to keep those from going into further decline. For our 2025 goals, the strategic plan for the Operations Center is a big part of it, and then continuing our accreditation journey. I'll get into a little more detail in the slides to come on those. Just overall, big-picture divisional summary here, divisional request of 2.7, 1, 2.7 million, overall about 1% increase. The big decrease in that 200 line is for some things that we did last year that we're not continuing this year with the scooter corrals and some other things downtown. Personnel is just the 3% COLA, and as I mentioned, the deduction in the supply. One other thing to point out here is that we did have scooter enforcement personnel costs that were in the admin division budget last year, that those have all shifted over to the Parking Services Division. And then we did have a pretty significant increase last year in our professional development and travel, and that is continuing to increase where, but that's just a focus on that professional development for all staff members across the board. There's no change in our capital lines. This is mostly used for capital purchases amongst the various divisions, so in any given year, this could be anything from a truck for the street department, capital purchases for sanit, not for sanitation, but for some of the other divisions that have the capital needs in any given year. Also for land acquisition, we set aside some for that. So just to highlight the Operations Center we've been talking about, we don't have a facility, we don't have a location fully finalized at this point in time. We have some ideas on what could work for us in Public Works and are working very closely with our friends in the mayor's office and some other city departments. But we, we just have a significant, we need to make a significant investment in our facilities to modernize them for the staff that work in them, but also to meet the services that we're tasked with providing. Whether it's our Street Maintenance Division, which is the old hand-me-down building from the Parks Operations Center of the 1970s, or the Fleet Maintenance Garage, which is a hand-me-down building from the Bloomington Transit Corporation in the 70s, the facilities simply don't meet modern needs. Our staff members in a lot of, in those buildings, when they go on break, it's to a room that we probably wouldn't want to go eat our lunch in. So we're really focused on this. We want to get into the full-fledged planning stages as we identify a site for it and really move that forward to meet our needs for the next 20, 50 years, 20 to 50 years going forward. So there is a large ask for professional design, scope, and construction services here. This is a placeholder. We're not there yet, but we do want to have resources ready to go when we get there with decisions on where this facility could be located. So, you know, the biggest thing we can do here is also co-locate a lot of our different divisions. If we could get street and sanitation and fleet maintenance all co-located, our administrative services in a lot of ways could be combined. We could really look at some efficiencies across the board to really meet our needs and meet the service delivery into the future. We put this in here because whenever we go as part of our accreditation process to visit other cities that are already accredited by the American Public Works Association, staff comes home really jealous. They see these, what modern facilities look like, they see what these other communities have for their public works agencies, and like I said, it leads to a little bit of jealousy, but we know we're working towards something that will be great for our long-term needs. With accreditation, though, so accreditation formally recognizes the work that we do in Public Works based on national standards. You've heard of me talk about this for a couple budget cycles in a row because it's a multi-year process. We are literally going division by division and documenting every policy and procedure we have so that we can, into the future, have not only succession planning, but know that we're meeting the standards that other accredited agencies are in service delivery, in financial management, in operations, and in facilities. So you'll see some funds that are set aside for continuation of that process. We're in year two of the, in year two of the three-year accreditation process. So at the end of 2025 and the first parts of 2026 is when we'll actually go through the formal accreditation, so we've got next year to finish up all of our work in that realm. Several staff members are headed to Atlanta, Georgia next week or so for the National American Public Works Association Conference, and we'll be doing some specific sessions. We'll do, several of the staff members are doing a full day of accreditation work while they're down there, so something that we really look forward to wrapping up and getting accredited, just some staff at some of those professional development opportunities. And get back to the asset management software systems. We are integrating an asset management system across the city with several departments. So CBU, Parks and Recreation, and Public Works are all going to be using the same platform going forward. This provides us a very good, a very strong foundation of information sharing and monitoring all the assets we're responsible for. The example I'll point out here that kind of shows how that cooperation and coordination works with asset management. We now do the final finish work for CBU on road repairs and concrete repairs. The asset management system being utilized by both departments allows CBU to send us work orders on those repairs where we can then cost-track and build back the materials to CBU and track exactly what those costs are for each of those repairs. So just a really robust system, something that we're excited to launch across the board in Public Works. We've got the Street Division up and running, and we're using a company that's a nationwide leader in this, so we're excited. And we've got some funds set aside for support there, and we'll be ready. We've already implemented street, and we're working on facilities for 2025. Our LED streetlight program, we are working towards getting more and more of our lights up to the LED standard. We have thousands of streetlights that we own and Duke maintains, and we're trying to, just from sustainability reasons and lowering our energy bills, continue with that process, and we'll have 20,000 set aside for that. And just to give you a general fund breakdown here, again, 2.7 million across the whole division, and we also staff City Hall, and I just want to leave with a note. We talk a lot about the four parts of the Public Works mantra or mission. We want to be good stewards of the taxpayer, resources we're trusted with, we want to operate in an environment of respect, we want to provide the highest levels of public service we can, and we want to complete that work as safely as possible. I will not go 20 seconds over on the next one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Director Wason, are there any questions for the administration portion of the Public Works budget? Councilmember Zulik.
Hi, thank you for the presentation.
Yes.
I know there are a lot of unknowns, but do you have any kind of estimate for the 2024, 2025 design of the Operations Center cost?
So we have some money in our 2024 budget currently that could be utilized for some outside services there. We did a placeholder of 300,000 just based on some feedback. We got some from some firms that do work in this area of Public Works facilities design and such. It's a placeholder, until we really start to scope and put forward an RFP, we won't know where that really lines out.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pete Moncive.
Yes, Mr. Wason, let's talk sidewalks. And if this is more appropriate for another sub-department or division, let me know. But we, in the council memo to the administration, we talked about creating a sidewalk master plan. Is that something you're pursuing?
Yes, I could, well, we are looking at sidewalks holistically across the city. It may be more appropriate for the Street Division, but I can answer it here as well. We have, we have been coordinating a sidewalk team across the city. Sidewalks touch, sidewalks touch five different departments, maybe six different departments in some way, shape, or form, whether it's Public Works that helps to maintain the overall network, whether it's HAND that works on, or, you know, overgrowth, planning and transportation on how sidewalks get planned and where they go, engineering with all the projects they do, CBU with all the sidewalk repairs they do and work they do, and then Parks as well. Parks has a lot of sidewalks they're responsible for. So we've got an interdepartmental team that we're, that we're ramping up work from to really work on that master plan and, you know, make sure we're coordinating across all the departments that touch sidewalks.
And are you envisioning a GO bond to pay for sidewalks in the future?
I think that's what that team would have to, I think that's what that team would be tasked with, is determining if, if that's a recommendation we want to make. I'll remind the council that, you know, when it comes to sidewalk maintenance, adjacent property owners are responsible for the maintenance of sidewalks adjacent to their property. Where Public Works really gets involved is if it's a street tree that we own that causes the damage to that sidewalk. So a street tree we own heaves a sidewalk three inches, that becomes our responsibility. We can't fix all of those in any given one year with the resources we have, but we really rely on private property owners to maintain the sidewalks they're responsible for. Not to say that there couldn't be a shift in that philosophy, but from what I can tell, that dates back to at least the 1970s as the city's philosophy from a code perspective.
With my final seconds, how are you doing on the LED lighting replacement? Like, how, what percentage roughly have we done, and how much is left to do? Like how, what percentage roughly have we done, and how much is left to do?
What's that? Please. Yeah, so we're only about 2% through.
2%?
Yeah, I think we've got somewhere around 13,000 streetlights that we, yeah. If you recall, I believe you were, yeah, you definitely were on the council at the time, we had some proposals years back where we wanted, we were possibly thinking about some major investments of the multimillion-dollar realm to overhaul all of our lights at once. That did not get prioritized in that bond funding, so now we're still doing the kind of piecemeal approach.
Thank you.
Councilmember Snussberg.
Thank you. This might be kind of a strange place to ask this question, and it might also involve Deputy Mayor Knapp, but this is when I thought of it, when I was reading the budget book, and so that's why I'm asking it now. So when I was going through, and I'm going to actually follow on the LED comment and go, okay, goal for LED streetlight replacement program, and it had budget impact, that there was like no personnel budget impact and no supply budget impact. And I'm assuming that it costs us something for the bulbs and that we have our personnel installing. That's not right. We like hire all of that out.
No, so the way the streetlights work, for the vast majority of the streetlights in our network, if it is a traditional roadway Cobra headlight, we have a long-term lease with Duke Energy to maintain those lights. Lease, we own, am I describing that right? Yeah. So, so the vast, vast majority of the thousands of lights that light the roadways in the city are maintained by Duke Energy. So we have, we get billed for the power use, or we get billed for those by unit and such, and they are responsible for the long-term maintenance. So as we pay out those costs, it's to Duke Energy to actually replace those bulbs.
Okay. I think my, my overall question still applies, it just maybe goes down to some other areas where it's budget impact, say, our paving, right? And paving road numbers, I assume, once again, like, I don't, our staff members, they're actually out there doing the paving, right?
Yeah, a combination, but yes, we do paving in-house.
So the, my, my point is that under budget impact, it says like there's no personnel budget impact. And I guess I was kind of thinking about it in terms of like, would it be appropriate to add under those goals, a category for budget allocation? And whether it would be possible even from the department head standpoint to kind of go like, okay, we know that, you know, repaving this or planning this is going to spend, you know, it's going to cost so many hours of so many staff, just so that then we can get a better understanding of, of staff time and cost for different initiatives.
So that did used to appear under program budgets that would have been included in the past budget packet, and in discussions about what to include this time, we cut those. That was a conversation together, do we need those program budgets that showed percentage of FTE or not? No, we're going to cut those. So the way we approached it this time was if someone is, has a goal and it's proposing something and we're hiring new staff, we're going to include that. But, you know, for many roles, people are doing multiple things at one time. So to say it's easy for Street, and sometimes, oh, I'm totally making this up, it's probably not easy, let's say that you have a team that works only on paving, then we could say, sure, 100% of those folks, all they're doing is paving, but that personnel number is already included, and if it's not changed, we're not adding new people, it's not like it's a new unexpected cost. So we could do all of that, I will say adds an extra layer, and it gets especially complicated for teams where, I'll use ESD as an example, where you have a very small team, CFRD is an even better one, we have a smallish team that's doing a lot of things, and every person in CFRD is involved in executing many, many, many events. So if you were to say, show us program by program what percentage of time each person is spending on that, it would be very challenging. So I think that data can be done.
We're just out of time, but thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Councilmember Rosari and then Daley.
Thank you so much. I hope that of your 18 years, this was your favorite one ever.
It certainly was, absolutely. 100%.
When thinking about the prospective building project, and I appreciate that you're saying we're not yet there, so we're trying to sort of earmark some money for it, I'm more concerned about, okay, when we get there and we earmark the money for it, does that, I mean, that means that we're going to go ahead with the building. And so have we started to have further conversations on, on actually, I mean, or is there some precedent where we've already approved such a building, or, so what are sort of the thoughts in that? Because it's a serious, would be a huge expense.
Well, yeah, so the thought is that over the next several months, we'll be continuing to work with the administration on identifying the priority location of where that would actually be sited. We've got a couple of good ideas, a couple of places that could work well. But once we get to a point of, of actually identifying a location, the money that we've been budging is for, is for the planning side of it to determine things like, you know, how many interior square footage of, for lack of better terms, pole barns? Do we need to store all of the millions of dollars of equipment we have outside of the elements? How many bays should we have in a parking, or in a Fleet Maintenance Garage? Should we add another fueling center? What would that look like? Or, you know, how many, how many private offices versus shared workspaces? So there's a lot that goes in, let alone site prep and engineering of roadways or storm, you know, anything like that that would go driveways. So the money that's, that we're asking for now is, is going to, we're not going to enter into contracts until we know we have a next phase, a next step in property identified. Obviously, working very closely with the Mayor's Office and the Controller's Office on what funding we could even be seeking or going after, whether it's bonding or other potential federal dollars with all the infrastructure bill, et cetera. So there's a lot more questions to be asked, but this is going to help us get in that direction of answering all those questions.
Thank you so much. And then just a clarifying question that may keep me from asking a question later. The software system that we're referring to is the City Works.
City Works is the brand, yes.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Councilmember Daley.
Thank you very much. I feel a little goofy dragging us back to the LED light question.
Perfect, nope.
Especially considering what we've gone over already. But, you know, the, the budget book or the outcome talks about brighter and cleaner LED lights. But white and blue colors are, I get that they're safe, they're safe, a safety issue because they're brighter, but they can also disrupt wildlife, reproductive, migration patterns, feeding. And so, you know, colors like yellow or amber are better for wildlife. And so A, do we even have any control over that with, with Duke being the owners of these? And B, are we open to looking at softer, not as bright and disruptive light bulbs for the LEDs?
We are limited in what is offered by Duke Energy, and I can try to follow up with some more information. I'm not overly educated on the different shades of color for the LED bulbs and such. It has come up in the past where we have on some of our previous installs where the lights, the color of the lights changed over time, and we had to do some replacements that were more manufacturer defects than anything. But I'd have to get back with you on the natural impacts that could occur to, or the impacts that could occur to nature or wildlife with that. I'm not overly educated on that.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Okay, I'll take a stab. Well, just to take off on the last question, which I appreciate because I brought it up in the last two budgets, and my understanding was that we were going to avoid blue lights because of that, because of the effect on wildlife. So I really would like, appreciate to know if we've been putting them in or if we've been using some other light frequency. So, but my question had to do with, we acquired 64,000 square feet of building behind us, and I'm curious to know if this can at all function for some of Public Works.
No. No, what we're talking about for an operation center is wholly different than a downtown office building. We're talking about something that would have a couple hundred thousand, up to a couple hundred thousand square feet of under-roof pole barns to put all of the snow plows, triaxles, backhoes, excavators, paving machines. You know, our paving machine right now is a $600,000 piece of equipment that sits under an awning. Our milling machine's a half a million dollar piece of equipment that sits under an awning. We have millions of dollars of triaxles and dump trucks that sit out in the open elements at all times. So when we're talking about an operation center, it's, it's more of machine shops and pole barns and Fleet Maintenance facilities with, you know, garage bays that meet standards to get all the biggest fire trucks that we have now in them, things like that. It's less of an, there will be an office component for sure, because we will have professional staff in there, the division directors, the office support staff, but what we're really looking for is more of an operations-type center.
Right, that was my, considering all the vehicles and equipment, that was my assumption, but I wanted to check. Okay, that's all the questions I think I have. If no one else has any, we'll go now to the public. This is for the administration component of the Public Works budget. I don't see anyone in the gallery who's stepping forward, anybody online?
If anyone on Zoom wishes to make a comment, you can do so using the raise hand feature in the reactions tab or the more tab, and if you need assistance, you can message the meeting host. No immediate takers online at the moment.
Okay. Wait just another moment. Okay, if no one has appeared, then we will come back to council for final comment. Councilmember Rosari.
Thank you so much, and I'm going to have other questions and comments, but I just think in this harkening back to something that Councilmember Flaherty, I think, has said many times, in the short time that I've been on council, one thing that I've learned is that targets constantly seem to be moving, and we, I'll criticize us, I think that we as a council have the ability to make anything very, very complicated. And my concern, as much as I'm very supportive of the idea of you getting the space that you need, I think you needed, get, it's clear, I think very, very strongly evident, but I would love to, in the weeks ahead, as we're finalizing this budget, also to be very engaged in us sort of pre-thinking about what's going to be needed from council in the months and years ahead as well, so that that doesn't become a politically fraught issue when, when we do come to the next bits, if that's a fair way of saying that. And so, but thank you for the very clear presentation, very clear memo, and, you know, you have, have my support personally, so just anything that we can do to sort of, you know, keep that moving forward would, would be appreciated. Thanks.
Other comments? Okay, seeing none. Let's move on then to the Animal Care and Control Division.
It's me again. This is going to happen about six more times. All right, before my timer starts, I'm going to get going. Animal Care and Control Division of Public Works, headed up by Virgil Souter, the Director of Animal Care and Control, Robin Pfeffinger, who is the Shelter Manager, and all the very dedicated staff that make up the 20 full-time employees, and then the four part-time and seasonal employees. I think I have said this almost every year, that I've given an Animal Care and Control budget request to the council, but this is some of the most emotionally invested staff we have in the entire city in so many, in a lot of ways. These are very passionate staff that work really hard to make sure animal welfare is first and foremost in their, in what they do. And just general notes, this has been one of the toughest years at the shelter in a very, very long time. Numbers are up, numbers are up across the board, whether it's the number of animals we're taking in, or the number of calls that we're taking out in the community. And the staff is stressed. They are, they're, they're working very hard just to meet, meet the needs of the animals down there right now. We've been at capacity for months on end, several months on end, yeah, at least since back in early spring and late winter. And so just want to commend the staff down there for all the hard work that they do. Key program areas are going to be animal shelter operations, so that's the sheltering services for all the animals that come into our care. Animal control, which is the Title VII enforcement for all things animal control out in the community, that's everything from dog bites to animal breeds that shouldn't be here, like, like animal breeds that shouldn't be here, to bats in the homes at 2:00 in the morning, to all kinds of different investigation-type stuff that they do. So really great work on Title VII, and then their volunteer program, and then education and outreach are the biggest areas that we undertake. We've had a 95% live release year to date. We are, our volunteer hours are up, which is great post, well, I don't know if post-COVID is really a term, but our volunteer rates are up from last year, and we're at about 35% of our animals getting into foster care, which is something we really strive for, given our capacity concerns. Here's an animal control activity, you know, when an animal has a milk jug on its head, somebody needs to help. And that's us. So current challenges, like I said, we've got a 9% intake increase of, of animals into the shelter from last, from 2023, 18% increase in animal control calls in the same period from last year. And we're really working hard with the Humane Association and others on some of the issues of pets in the unhoused community. You know, what would be an animal control presentation without some great pictures? So for next year, we want to maintain that really high live release rate. It's becoming harder and harder. We are having to make more difficult decisions based on our capacity than we have in years past, and that's stressful. That's stressful on the staff, and so we're still trying to maintain that really high rate. That is above and beyond what a lot of communities are able to do, and we're really, really proud of that. I'll talk about these other goals as we get there, so I don't run out of time. 2.24 million, or 2.22 million overall request, and that's about a 1% increase overall. The big Capital Four, Category Four capital outlays deduction, that's because we had a generator project this year that's being funded in our 2024 budget that we won't do next year, although it came in higher than we expected for price. Budget notes, we are adding some personnel costs here for additional temporary staff. We've added some temporary staff this fall, or this summer and into the fall to try to help alleviate the stress on the staff, but it's still not enough. And so we are asking for some additional, expecting that our numbers aren't going to change too much. Supplies, no real major changes there. And then other services, additional $12,000 for contracted veterinary services. For anyone that has an animal at home, veterinary costs are not cheap, and, and we've just seen more need for higher use of those, that veterinary care. Again, really striving for that live release rate. I don't think there's another shelter in Indiana, maybe even the Midwest, that achieves that rate. So obviously something we're very proud of. Live release rate means that 94% of the animals that come into our care leave our care and don't face euthanasia or, and such. So for our, on our additional funding for those additional positions, that's included in Category One. And again, I mentioned that the capital outlays is lower for next year because of the generator project we're doing this year, but we're also looking to make some major improvements to the dog runs that are aligned the back of the building on the adoption center side. Those are over 20 years old and need just replacement. Talked about that. So the decrease in this, or the goal number two for decrease and delay for veterinary services, we're trying to do some innovative pilot-type programs to work with all of our veterinary clinics that want to partner with us to reduce the amount of times that, that the animal is identified for veterinary care but isn't able to get it. So that's something we're really working on, and that's where that increase in the budget kind of comes from for that. Moving along, the volunteer hours. So we've always strived for that like 10,000-hour level. That's a, it's a, it's a lofty goal. 10,000 hours is a lot of volunteer hours. Fortunately, we have a lot of animal lovers in the community. Last year, we got back to about, to the 9,500, or this year, we're projecting out to 9,500 hours, and so we want to keep increasing that into 2025. We rely on the volunteers. They are a huge part of, of our overall efforts down there, and really couldn't do without them. Even with as dedicated of a, of a staff we have, they really fill some major gaps for us. I mean, is there anything cuter than a little kid reading a book to a dog? That's the only reason that's up there. So again, we're just really trying to increase those hours, and, you know, that, that 10,000 hour, that provides the equivalent of four to five FTEs. That's, that's really big. So wanting to increase the rate of animals in foster care. As the numbers increase of the animals that come into our care, foster care is exactly what it sounds like. So it's an animal that remains the city of Bloomington's responsibility, but we have partners out in the community that are willing to house- but we have partners out in the community that are willing to house those animals until we get them adopted. An animal that's being housed through the foster program is still gonna show up on the posters and be adoptable and all the things, but it's an animal that's not requiring our staff to care for it on a daily basis. It's just really a great win-win for us in so many different ways. So in, you know, the latter parts of '22 and into '23, we're starting to see an increase in that, of folks being willing to do that more, and really hoping to get that up to above that 40% that we're projecting for this year. And just not to harp on this too much, but if you just think of it from an animal's perspective, being in the shelter with the barking dogs all day long and the stress levels and such, if you're out of home, it's just better all around for that animal. So we are adding a little into that budget category to help fund those efforts. And then, yeah, we've had some intern help and are continuing into that. So again, overall budget request of 2.24, $2.22 million, and some additional funding sources that we have outside of just traditional city funds. We get quite a few donations throughout the year, financial donations, whether as part of living, as part of a will or a bequest. But then we also, whether it's the Subaru Share the Love campaign or other campaigns, we do receive in funds through our donation lines there that we utilize for any number of things. This past year, we utilized donor funds to buy out the lease for Monroe County Humane Association that had been there for a long time, expanded the amount of space we had to provide the services we do, and win-win for both organizations. So overall, a small increase, and again, what we're tasked with doing is providing the highest levels of care to the animals that come into our, into our care and get those back out to the community at the highest rates possible. So happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Questions for the Animal Care and Control Division? Councilmember Sari?
Super fast one, mostly, right as you're drinking, sorry. Mostly for public benefit, but can you speak on what needs to happen for people to become volunteers? Is there training that they have to go through? How do I volunteer with the animal shelter?
Virgil Souter, Director of Animal Care and Control. Yes, if you're interested in volunteering, the easiest way is just go on the city's website. There's an application process there you can fill out for either volunteering in the shelter or as a foster parent. We're also looking for that to happen as well. And then there is for the fosters, we do have an online orientation. We're moving towards more of that to get them in quicker.
And then while you're here, could you talk a little bit about that pilot program that's mentioned in the, in the budget? And I think we're extending it. That was to move non-urgent care to divert it, I think, was the idea of it.
So, yeah.
Has it worked and, and is it, do you feel like it's adequately supported in the current budget?
So, so that's a new program for 2025.
Ah, okay.
So this year, we don't have funds for a contract veterinarian where we do everything. We're, if we have need, we're calling around, just like you would with your own pet, to try to find a place to get them in. This program hopefully will have somebody dedicated to the shelter up to three hours a week that can kind of cover our tasks.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Zillik?
Hi, thank you for the presentation. So obviously, as you mentioned, sometimes staff has to make difficult decisions. Can you talk about the mental health resources that are available to staff and how that's reflected in the budget?
So for that, it's gonna be pretty traditional through the employee assistance program. All those resources would be made available. The one thing I can tell you is there is a lot of care that goes into that decision, and it's what I would describe as a safe environment, where the staff that are working on those really tough decisions are working together. You know, sometimes there is disagreement, but they all always are working towards a decision that the group can support. It never comes down to just one individual. And in some cases, you know, Virgil may have to be a tiebreaker or things, you know, in the worst cases, but we try to do that in the safest environment and the most supportive environment. And if there was a direct need or a direct ask, we would be looking for additional resources even beyond the employee assistance program.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll go to my perpetual question. This predates LED lights. It's urban deer. I know that Mr. Souter was waiting for this. I want to bring it up because I'm always challenged by constituents. Is the city going to do anything? What can they do? I know it's complicated. This is the third administration that I've asked questions about this, and the first one ignored the problem. The second one actually addressed Griffey, which is to their credit. I wondered about, so my concern is, we still have a population. I don't know what the population is. It seems to be fairly high in, you know, District Four, maybe elsewhere too in the city. There's concerns about garden browsing, in particular, not just ornamental things, but it disproportionately affects low-income residents who are trying to grow food, for instance, and they can't afford fencing. And then there's the health concern, which is tick-borne diseases. So I appreciate everything your, your division does. I think it's just incredible what your staff has to deal with, and this is a potential additional burden, but there is no other role for the council in this other than to ask the, it's an administrative role in order to address this issue. So my question is, are there any plans for addressing this concern in one way or another?
You know, Councilmember Wallo, this has been talked about for years. We all know that we have an urban deer. Well, some people would say that we have an urban deer problem, some people would say that we don't. You know, what the answer in this is, we have the reports of the Deer Task Force from many years ago. It was one of the most controversial things I've ever witnessed in my career of the city. Plain and simple. Those hearings, those, you know, the concept, when, when the idea of a deer call is discussed, those were horribly controversial meetings. We would want guidance.
Well, okay, let me just say this. I didn't say anything about a call.
And what I, yeah.
I just want to know, do we even know that there is a problem? What's the extent of the problem?
I think that would take much further study, and it would take much, it would take additional resources and budgets, and it would require many outside resources beyond the Animal Care and Control Division. While we have experts in Animal Care and Control, they are not urban deer experts. They are not, you know, it's just simply not, they're, they are experts in caring for animals that come into their care, but that's a, that's a bigger ecological question. That's a bigger community-wide question than I think falls just to the Animal Care and Control Division or even Public Works. So I know that's not an answer you're really looking for here, but it's, it's what we face. This requires DNR and animal expert, wildlife experts beyond what we have.
Okay, fair enough. I think we, we do hire consultants and so forth, and so I wanted to put that question out
Sure.
for the entire administration, not just specifically for Mr. Souter or you, because I think I appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we go to public? Seeing none, then we'll go to public for comments on Public Works' Animal Care and Control Division. If you'd like to have your say, please join us virtually.
Yes, and if you are on Zoom, you can comment by raising your hand, using the reactions tab or the more tab. And if you need assistance, you can send a chat to the meeting host. No immediate hands raised at the moment.
Okay, let us know if that changes, and we'll come back to council, see if we have any comment. Councilmember Daley?
I just want to say that my, my three best friends came from the shelter, so thank you very much. Take all the monies. Great, that's fantastic, and you guys owe me a new couch. Thank you.
Take all the monies and you owe me a new couch?
So anyone else? Besides me, oh, you. Councilmember Stasburg?
Thank you. Yes, me. I also just generally want to heap praise on the animal shelter. I think that I have two Bloomington animal shelter pets, and then my other ones have come from other nearby shelters. But it is a really, really tough job, I think, to be in that situation. And I guess then I also want to send an appeal out to our community to do your best to just be responsible pet owners and spay and neuter your pets and adopt, don't shop. And they work really, really hard, and that live release rate is really phenomenal for a municipal operation because they are required to take in whatever pets are found abandoned or lost or whatever. By statute, they have to take them and figure out how to care for them. So, yeah, if I had fewer of my own pets, then I would foster more, but I cannot take another little, little furry creature into my house. But thank you very much for all of the work that you do.
Thanks for making note of that. That is really important. The responsible pet ownership is a real key partner for us.
Any other comment? Okay, I'm gonna add a little bit more, which is about deer. And that's to say that, yes, the deer study was in 20, gosh, I don't even remember, 2012?
I was trying to think of what it was.
Yeah, long time ago. In fact, it was so long ago that, you know, any deer count would, would have consisted of hiring a helicopter, and now we have drones. So, yeah. And also the technology, I think the science of sterilization has improved. So I didn't want to leave anybody with the impression that I'm proposing a deer call. In fact, really, what I'm only proposing at this point is that we kind of grapple with, if there's a problem and to what extent it is. That is, you know, what is the population of urban deer in Bloomington? And can we keep some metric, some baseline, so we understand it? Maybe in coordination with Health Department if they get, you know, reports about tick bites and things like that or diseases and so forth, just so we have, have a, can grapple with that. And, and really, there are probably some things that council could do. We could raise heights of fences, for instance, or we could, we could have a deer feeding ban. Those are things that we could explore, but they're pretty minimal. We did that already. Okay. Gosh. Okay, thank you. Well, don't have to do that then. All right, very good. Let's move on then to the next division, which is Facilities Maintenance. Take it away, Director Waisen.
So Facilities Maintenance Division is responsible for all city-owned buildings and structures and a small team. So we've got five total FTEs that service the Facilities Maintenance Division, and this is for over 28 different properties and buildings that they're tasked with. Oh, I forgot, I only get seven minutes on this one. All right, we will go quick. So JD Boroff and his team lead up, JD Boroff leads up the Facilities Maintenance Division with Barry Wallach and Russell White as two full-time employees that focus on the buildings and grounds. And then we have Zach Souters, who's our downtown specialist, who helps lead up the Brighton-B Town partnership with Centerstone. Some of the big successes we've had in the last year, we're working on the Fire Station One remodel downtown. It's looking great, and we've got two coming along. With storm damage, we dealt with a lot of storm damage with facilities, including an awning at the Street Division that needs taken down. But we're also helping manage our DC-owned facilities, including the mill, with some of the facilities maintenance things there. And then one thing of note, no lost time to injuries in '24 is a great thing. Knock on wood. Some of our challenges, so we've, we've added a position that's gonna be helping us overall with the administrative aspects of the Facilities Division, something we've never had, really appreciate. But we also wanna, we're also gonna be having a part-time person help us with some inventory things in 2025 as part of those asset management efforts that I've been talking so much about. So just in terms of our goals, three big goals overall, it's asset management. City Hall HVAC continues to be a main goal of ours with digital controls, and then just appearance at City Hall as a main one. Overall budget request of 1.8 million, which is about an 8% increase from 2024, and that includes the new position we added. Thank you, council, for adding that earlier this year. Very much needed and doing great work already. So again, personnel goes up a bit because of that. And then the 20-hour-per-week temporary part-time that we talked about for, I think we're expecting about a three-month period on that one. Overall, supplies are down a little bit. We had some pretty, you know, we had a pretty intense request last year that isn't reflected this year with some of the equipment that, the battery-powered and electric equipment that the Brighton-B Town crews are using. Other services and charges, we're increasing this a little bit. It seems like each year we are finding more unexpected things with some of our older facilities, like City Hall, et cetera, that just pop up. If we have a major cooling tower issue, that means we're not doing something else, so we're just putting a little increase there. And no major change on capital. I know we're having bigger conversations about GO bonds and capital, so that's noted here. So again, standing up Facilities Division on the City Works platform for asset management. Again, this is gonna allow things like our HVAC systems, our roofs, our building envelopes, our, our parking lots, our sidewalks in front of our buildings, all to be in the asset management system. Create work orders, track overtime, just really great modernization effort that we're undertaking there. And so that's got that personnel cost for the temporaries that we talked about for the inspection services to help us with that. And again, just more information that I've already kind of gone over on asset management's efforts, city, or Public Works-wide on that slide. Upgrade to City Hall HVAC. So this has been part of a multi-year request coming forward to the council. We have many different units that control the heating and cooling of this facility. Some of them more modern and newer than others, but what we're wanting to do is we've got part of the system digitally upgraded, and we want to finish those efforts. So there is a budget impact here. This is to get us on a, a non-proprietary system that any HVAC service provider can use to help us with our overall management of these complex and complicated systems. Part of this is, the current system we've been using is no longer accessible on a Windows platform, and so with a lot of these programs, they're, it's just time for updates and upgrades. That chart's not nearly big enough to show you what it actually has on it, but this is the monitoring systems that we will have access to. So our overall entirety, the entire system in a monitoring system, that we're able to track usage numbers, but also maintenance costs, et cetera, and downtime. We want to do some pretty major, not major things here at City Hall, but some just basic maintenance things. City Hall, a lot of this is original to the original renovation. Here in the next few weeks, you'll be getting beautiful new carpet in here as part of our 2024 budgets, but we want to do more things throughout the building and on the exterior, whether it's wood repairs, wallpaper replacement, parking lot improvements, et cetera. It's, it's time. And I think we're even getting new phones still, so that's, that's even another big one. Yeah, just, you know, we've got a lot of really great wood in this building, but it takes a craftsman to maintain it. You can't just go put some stain on that and make it better. You've got to do more work, you gotta do some, you know, more skilled labor than that. So things we want to do there. Parking lot improvements, working with Parks and Rec and others right now on some temporary improvements until we get into next year for these capital improvements. But, you know, we just need a new layer of asphalt and things to keep up with the maintenance needs that we have, including like the brick pavers out front. We need to do some maintenance work, some more intense maintenance work than just cleaning and putting some more sand down. So that's a budget impact that we've got about $250,000. Again, we're gonna have more conversations about capital with the council and the Controller's Office. And this is kind of a multi-year thing that we're doing over time. And overall budget request of 1.8 million, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions in Facility Maintenance? Yes, Councilmember Sari, and then Stasburg?
I'd be remiss not to ask this question about the cybersecurity concerns around a web-based platform, particularly around HVAC systems. I mean, I think, we think a lot about HVAC, you know, just like the air conditioning here, but I'm thinking more about, you know, like places that actually rely on having cooling and heating, et cetera. So could you talk a little bit about how we're working with ITS to mitigate those concerns?
Anytime we're doing any type of new software system or anything that's ITS-related project, we're going to be communicating and coordinating with them on the platforms that we're using, making sure that they're on our secure servers, et cetera. Have great faith in our team with Rick Dietz and Michael Crump and all of those guys that, all those staff members that do that work for us. It is way above my knowledge base to tell you exactly how they do it, but I know the system that we're looking to use, I won't use the brand name of it, but we're working closely with ITS to make sure it meets all of their configuration standards or any other term that I'm going to misuse here.
Great. And it's something, I mean, you know, something happy to talk, not in this context about, but I think similarly, when, you know, when we're looking at the other software, the Smart City one.
City Works?
City Works, thank you. How do we make the decision that that was the one we wanted to go with instead of any of its competitors? And what's our sort of thinking there?
Absolutely. So it all, so I'll use the brand name since we are, but City Works is one of the industry leaders for municipal government asset management systems. They've been around a long time. They have a lot of satisfied clients. We, it started with CBU. We were using a different platform over the last couple of years, weren't super satisfied with it. CBU was taking that step. They did demos of multiple different options of asset management platforms, brought Public Works into some of those original presentations. We all agreed City Works was a great platform. CBU went to that two years ago now, starting, I think it was their 2023, so almost a year and a half ago is when they stood up that platform for their own use. And since then, we get some economies of scale, so on licensing, on training, on all of those things. So we went through the demos, we found it met our needs, we knew it was an industry leader, those sorts of things. But we're excited.
Yeah, and CBU is happy with the software.
Oh, absolutely.
Great, fantastic, thank you.
Councilmember Stossberg?
Thank you. I also had some questions about the HVAC system. Hopefully, kind of short answer maybe, because there's maybe a few piled on top of each other. Do you know what temperature we set the HVAC to and how individualized that, is that in different offices in City Hall?
It is, JD, I know you're online, I know you couldn't be here in person tonight, if you want to jump in and help answer this, but we have a very complex system here of different ages of the systems. Is JD? Okay. JD, you want to help answer this one? So the question basically is, do we have a standardized temperature for the building? And what are the complexities of the system?
We don't have a standard temperature throughout the building. We try to keep the offices around 68 for heating, around 70 to 72 for cooling. In certain situations, like the council chambers, blood drive, the Red Cross requests that we keep the temperature down on 67 if possible. So we changed it around, but we try to keep the heating around 68 and the cooling between 70 and 72.
I'll add with that, one thing with all of the individual workstations and different departments, some areas get warmer than others. You know, up in CFRD on the second level with a bunch of windows, it's taking more intense, it's taking more intense efforts to keep that cool. We have staff members that have much different preferences based on their personal preferences of temperature. So they, basically, it's set into zone, we have a lot of zone settings, and then staff can tweak it a degree or two in either direction sometimes.
Okay, so with like the new systems, are the zones going to be expanded? Is that going to be easier to tweak?
Yes.
Okay, great. And part of the reason I'm asking that right now is that, A, I'm freezing. I'm really, really cold. And B, that is a climate issue. Air conditioning uses a tremendous amount of energy, and it's one of those cyclical things that like, the more you cool the space inside, the hotter you make it outside. And I just wonder, when I'm sitting here in the middle of summer and I'm freezing, whether we're making good climate decisions with regard to how we're managing our heating and cooling, and how easy that is for people to change, and how well the system can manage to process those changes. So I hope, there's not really a question there, I'm sorry, that's more of a comment, but I just hope that with the new system, it is a little bit easier to do that.
So I, this is the perfect example of personal preference. You know, I see that you're in a hoodie, but I see another council member in a short-sleeve shirt. I'm not cold here, I'm actually a little warmer than you might be. On a day like today, it's especially hard. It's 105-degree heat index outside, we're, we've got an antiquated big system that's trying to cool multiple different spaces. Your point is not lost on me by any means.
Yeah, time.
Sorry, time.
Can I get a clarification on the timing for the questions? If a question takes the whole time, do I get to respond?
No.
Okay.
Okay, where are we? Councilmember Flaherty?
How does this year's ED Lit budgeted amount compare to last year's? Timer hasn't even started. Oh, they did it, okay.
Oh, the Brighton B-Town is in the ED Lit, so that's a steady number year to year. What I can tell you about the Brighton B-Town program, and if you'll oblige, do you have more questions?
I do, but take a minute.
I'll find a way to figure, it's one of the programs I'm most proud of in my entire career in city government. We do great work with that. The supportive employment aspect of it, the impacts on those people as humans and individuals in the community, getting into housing, getting the support they need in a wraparound way is something that is just tremendous. We want to grow that program, but we want to grow it with other resources, whether they be state or federal resources. Every meeting, I get the chance to talk about that program with congressional representatives or their staff members, with state representatives, with the business community. I think we're going to find some major support in the next year or so with outside funding to double or triple that program. And quite honestly, one thing that would be amazing is if other communities took it up as well, because Centerstone's a statewide provider.
Great, thank you. Second question, I asked this about last year, what our kind of long-range plan is regarding building electrification. So our buildings that aren't gas, in particular, for, as a heating, water and space heating source, are incompatible with our climate goals on a, you know, 2050 timescale. We were addressing that with new construction, like the new proposed CBU facility, what the council has, you know, directed or requested for the convention center expansion, et cetera. So we're, it's easier with new construction because you're blank slate. Retrofitting is harder, and it's going to be a decades-long project. I don't think we'd thought about it much as of last year. Since then, I know Sean Mia has engaged in a contract that is not just energy efficiency investments, also much needed, but also looking at the building electrification front for all of our city-owned facilities. And just wanted to ask on your end, what's the status on that? Where are we in that timeline?
Yeah, so we're really working, waiting and working with Sean. She's kind of headed up some of these efforts. We're doing a major lighting project here at City Hall to, that's just, I know it's not the same exact thing, but really relying on our partners in ESD and elsewhere to help us determine what those next steps are in terms of what we should prioritize. And then it's going to come, with the retrofits, it's going to be expensive. I can't recall, I know we looked at maybe a geothermal field out here a few years back, and the number that came up was just extraordinary. So it's going to, it's going to require figuring out where those funds can come from. We're fully supportive, and we want to be good partners and all that, so.
Yeah, it's a long-range planning thing, for sure. Thank you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I wanted to ask about gender-neutral restrooms. It was mentioned by Tim Street during the Park's presentation, and I wonder if that's something that Facilities has considered for city buildings?
Yes, but no. So, you know, like when we think of City Hall, those, you know, to do a major bathroom renovation is not something that we've thought about yet. Very good point, something we will take into consideration right now and into the future. I don't know how to say this any other way, but we're not going to ask which bathroom you use at City Hall. I know it's not ideal to have our multi-unit, or multi-stall, or whatnot bathrooms for that, but very good point, something that we need to take into account. So thank you.
And then in your memo, you asked for funding to demolish a building on surplus property on West Third Street?
Okay.
What is that property and what's the value?
Yeah, actually, so this is, this is a little bit of a mistake in the budget book. So your memos and your presentation were updated to everything that we are asking for currently. We had some issues with the budget book and the notes transferring over that we wanted for 2025. That's a note from 2024 budget request, so I apologize, I forgot, I should have mentioned that at the beginning of this one. What I can tell you is good news, we found Hand wants to partner with a affordable reuse on that property. It was getting to a point that it was dilapidated enough that we thought it needed to be torn down. We got some quotes back, they're going to be able to fix the roof and get that to be an affordable unit and get that, keep that in the inventory, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Where is that located?
Excuse me. Like Bloomington, it's a road that's got multiple names depending on which area. I think that's on Windale to the south, so West Third Street and Windale and Franklin. So if you can think about where the fire station is on West Third, it's on the south side of the road, which I believe is Windale, and on the north side of Third Street, it's Franklin, because Bloomington.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council on Facilities? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. If any member of the public would like to comment on the Facilities Maintenance Division of Public Works for 2025?
And again, if you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature in the reactions tab, or if you can't find it in the more tab, or send a chat to the meeting host. No hands raised.
Okay, let's come back to council for a final comment. Any final comments? Okay, I have none. So let's move on now to Fleet Maintenance. It's the Adam Waisen Show.
All right, she hasn't got the timer going. Fleet Maintenance is a Public Works Division responsible for safe and efficient maintenance and repair of all of the vehicles, equipment, et cetera. You can go slower on that, it's okay. These are big budgets. So Fleet Maintenance, you know, I've said this in the years past, it's really a kind of a backbone of city services. These are some of the most techno, these are some of very dedicated employees, they're super talented in what they do. I get to say that they're really responsible for everything from A to Z, that's ATVs to Zambonis. And it's very true. And on any given day, a technician at the Fleet Maintenance Garage could be working on a hydraulic system for a sanitation truck, a, you know, a water pump on a fire truck, or basic maintenance on a police car. It's just really a wide variety of things. We have 702 officially numbered in vehicles, vehicles or equipment units, and we're doing everything from preventative maintenance to routine and preventative maintenance as well as major repairs. We also manage the fuel supplies for all city services. We've, so far in 2024, completed more than 10% to date, 10% more preventative maintenance services than in 2023. We're fully staffed at this point in time, and that's a huge plus for us. It was pretty hard there to find qualified technicians a few years back, but have gotten our staffing back up. We've been really working hard to surplus underutilized assets through the Gov Deals platform, where we auction off our assets that we no longer need, and that's raised some money, some good, some finances for us. And then really been working hard with the Fire Department on reducing the amount of time they have downtime with their apparatus. As our fleet's grown, we realized one of the areas that we lacked some, not lacked expertise, but we're spending more time on than we, than we really could allocate towards it, was on some of the major fire trucks. So they, in partnership with Fire, we've got some outside services vendors that do a great job and help reduce some of that load on us. And another thing super proud of, we started an internship program with the Hoosier Hills Career Center. In Public Works, we want to try to provide opportunities for future staff members to get some experience. And if you don't know about all the great work that Hoosier Hill Career Center does, please look them up, it's through the school district. But their automotive tech program is really phenomenal, and Evie, the young woman that's currently in the internship program with us, is just a tremendous asset. Kids are really smart and they want to work hard, I promise, and these programs are really awesome to set up. It's the first time we've ever done it, and we're actually looking at not only just an internship program, but a full apprenticeship program through Hoosier Hills and the Department of Labor. So exciting stuff. Challenges, again, Facilities, that is the biggest facility, you know, and staffing. So there is a staffing request that I'll get to here in a moment. Opportunities, again, new facility, and then expanding the program. I'll jump right into all the goals after I give you a brief summary. We're asking for, the overall budget's a $4.22 million request. Do remind, just to remind the council and for some of the newer members, this is an internal services division funded by all the other departments. So we do five-year rolling averages on the costs of fleet services to each of the different departments. So the Police Department is going to pay their percentage of the overall cost to manage Fleet Maintenance, as is the Fire Department, CBU, on down the line. And so that's a five-year rolling average. And thank you, Lisa Lizell, and thank you, Corey Snyder, for all your hard work on that annual report, which will become much easier as we upgrade our asset management systems. So we are eliminating a temporary position, but we are adding a service and capital coordinator Fleet is just an area where we have not kept up with the staffing numbers required to manage the number of vehicles we have. The service and capital coordinator position is going to take a huge burden off the director. Right now, for almost every vehicle that we purchase at the city, Corey Snyder has to place that order. He's our fleet director. He's the one that coordinates every purchase, and we just really need help there, not only on the capital purchasing, but also on the service coordination with all the other departments that utilize Fleet. We're projecting some decreases in the fuel pricing for 2025 based on the outlooks and projections. We hope that stays true and that we don't have any major worldwide crisis that have that go up, but we've managed that in the past and will, you know, continue to as we go forward. And then just a capital note here, there is, and I know Councilmember Stossberg had a question about this, we do have a $100,000 earmarked for a storage facility down there. This will be a facility that we would make sure if we actually move forward with this, that it's something that we could utilize into the future, given all of our facility conversations. We, we're just at capacity down there for all, all aspects, but especially storage as well. And anybody that would love, want a tour, I'm happy to accommodate. We're increasing the number of PMs we do every month. We've been behind for a long time on this. This is when, three years ago, we came to the council with more position requests because we were not keeping up with best management practices. We are coming closer and closer each year, again, something I'm super proud of. Every time we miss a routine maintenance of an oil change or something else, the life of that vehicle decreases. You've got to maintain the vehicles we have, and so very proud of the increases we've gotten and continuing that into next year. And this also does cover all of our outside repairs. We don't do everything in-house. If we have a major engine overhaul, we're not going to have one staff member spend two weeks on that, we're going to send it out to an outside vendor. Fleet continues to grow as we grow as a city and as an organization, and that does put a strain on Fleet. The new service coordinator position, capital and service coordinator position, I've already kind of described what we're thinking there. And that does have a budgetary impact with all costs there. The temporary storage structure, again, so something that is desperately needed even in the interim of having larger capital and facility discussions. Kind of talked about that. So another goal, we have, while our technicians stay up to date on all of their certifications that they're required to have, they still need advanced training on all of the new technologies. So right now, although the EVs that we have in our inventory don't require much maintenance... So, right now, although the EVs that we have in our inventory don't ma, don't require much maintenance, we don't, our technicians can't do anything, they're not touching those. Those are all going to go out for outside service, so we need to get some folks trained up on that. And just overall with adding some additional training for fire apparatus as well. So, yeah, this is to that same point of some additional staff for fire training apparatus, or training for fire apparatus. Overall request of 4.22 million and a very busy place that has a lot of dedicated and talented staff there on a daily basis. I'm, I'm, I'm not surprised, but I admire the creativity and the, the amount of work they're getting done with the resources and the facility they have. It's just, the modernization of a facility for them will make huge impacts on the overall work environment and what they're able to do, so happy to answer questions.
Very good. Are there questions for Director Wason on Fleet Maintenance? Councilmember Rosari?
We talked about doing 50 maintenance things a month, and, but then we've raised the fleet to 702. Why not do, you know, 58 so that we can sort of service everything this year? And would that have a budgetary impact?
It would. It would probably require some additional staffing or keeping that part-time staffing position that we're shifting. We're doing everything we can to try to stay ahead of that curve, and these increases that we're making are noticeable in terms of the life of the vehicles, but this is another area. In a, in a few of the past council presentations on this budget, I've shown some charts where it shows how the inventory of vehicles that we own and are responsible for maintaining have gone like this, and the staffing has stayed like this. And so, we're becoming more efficient in what we do, you know, interns like Evie help with that. The part-time position's been helping a lot with that, but we're, we're still not going to meet best management practices, but we're getting closer.
Okay, thank you so much. And then, and I would be supportive of, of, of that increase if that meant that in the long term it keeps, I think it's, it's against the right type of investment, right?
And just real quick, if I could, councilmember. The hardest part with trying to increase the fleet budget is it's every other department that needs to fund it.
Right.
And so, it's been a challenge over the years of, you know, of really getting that done. We're getting better and we're doing more, so that's what we're proud of.
Excellent, thank you. And then I, I meant to ask this to Director Cooper Smith, but there's an element in their budget towards helping us move towards the electric. Why, why is that in their budget rather than in Public Works budget?
Uh, it's just where the, because they help fund that across several different departments. So, each year, so in the last two years that I think it's been in the ESD budget, it's geared for electrification of the city's vehicles or equipment. And so, it's been funding things in parks and funding things in Public Works and even some of the other departments. So, each year, and it's, and this is a really good way to do capital purchasing or, or, you know, Director Street and I will sit down with Sean Mia and Tim will talk about, well, hey, we replaced two zero-turn mowers with electric last year, I know you need a new mo, it's, it's a give and take and it's worked really well.
That makes sense, great, thank you.
Further questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public. This is the Fleet Maintenance Division of the Public Works Budget for 2025.
Just what I just did, right?
What's it?
Did you say public comment? Oh, I thought you said to present the, okay, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. No public comment, I'm assuming.
And I don't see any hands raised on Zoom at the moment.
Okay, we'll come back to council then. Comment? Councilmember Rosenberg?
I had a question, I didn't get it in, I'm sorry about that. Do we have equipment for, in our fleet for clearing other surfaces other than our car lanes? So, our new protected bike lanes and whatever sidewalks we are responsible for?
We have, yes, we have a smaller piece of equipment that we can do snow removal and debris removal from the bike lanes that are at least six feet wide, like the new temporary protected bike lane on Third Street. No, we don't have equipment to work on that smaller four-foot bike lane, and that was, that was known in the planning for that. But yes, we do, we have a Bobcat with a brush and a plow that can do the more traditional bike lanes like over on West Third and Adams or the new Seven Line, but the really smaller protected bike lanes, no, that, that, that would have to be hand equipment at this point.
Little Bobcat guy can't get a different brush?
It's not small enough.
Oh, the Bobcat?
Yes.
I think we gotta get something for that bike lane, though.
Are there any other questions before we move to comment? I, I actually would like to follow up because in Ann Arbor, they actually remove those barriers so they can plow.
Take them up and then plow and then put them back?
Believe it or not, yeah. I'm not suggesting we do it, I'm just wondering if, anyway.
I think they have tenon stakes into the asphalt.
It's certainly a challenge. Anyway, are there any other, are there any comments? Councilmember Stossberg?
Thank you, I just want to highlight something that you said when talking about your Hoosier Hills intern. You said kids are really smart and they work really hard. I wanted to highlight that comment because kids are really smart and they do work really hard, and I'm really pleased that you have this collaboration going with the Hoosier Hills Auto Tech Program. Thanks.
Other comment? Okay, let's move on then to Parking Services.
All right, take your time, Ash. Dang it, all right. Adam Wason, Public Works Director. So, Parking Services Division, we joked earlier that it was 2021 when the concept of combining all things parking back into one division of Public Works was entertained and approved. And so, we went through the infancy of year one, we went through the terrible twos of, of, of year two and toddler stage, and now we're in like full toddler stage of year three and going into year four. So, it's, it's the newest combined division of Public Works in a lot of ways, but it's also, I think, something that's benefited the city overall by putting all things Public Works into a, into one division. I thought you were putting a stocking cap on because you were so cold. Please, no. So, 29 FTEs, one part-time, and then 15 seasonal crossing guards. Some folks don't know, Parking Enforcement manages the school crossing guard program citywide. So, I think we're fully staffed right now, which has been a challenge in years past, but always looking for more applicants there. We manage the four downtown parking garages, all on-street and off-street parking meters, as well as all residential parking zones. And parking is, it's a lot, it's complex, and it, it takes a lot to manage, and want to shout out to Michelle Wall and her team and the team at Parking Services, Rayanne Cox, longtime city staff member, and Jessica Goodman, the parking garage manager, as well as all those Parking Enforcement Officers, garage staff, and crossing guards. Believe it or not, parking can be stressful for folks, whether it's getting a ticket or trying to find the right location for them to park legally. And the one thing I've learned in the last couple of years is the staff there, maybe some of the most verbally abused staff we have across the city. They're just out there doing their jobs, but they take the brunt of the public's anger when that orange ticket shows up for illegal parking. So, a big shout out to them for trying to really always deflect and diffuse any of those situations. So, some of the successes, we've had a towing ordinance in place for the last year, and this, this is just, it's, it's been successful. We never want to have to tow a vehicle for accumulated parking citations, but when you have folks with five, 10, 15, 20 unpaid parking citations that continue to get more citations, this has been our recourse. Michelle and the team work very closely with the individuals that get into that situation to try to lessen the impact, but it's been necessary and it's gotten some of the worst violators to actually come into compliance. We've also issued 2,717 scooter violations citations, but I will, that was 2023. Since the installation of the geofencing and the corrals, that's down to 540 in the downtown. Still have major issues with scooters in some of the neighborhoods, et cetera, where the geofencing doesn't occur, but it's success. I am going to fall short on time if I don't speed up here. So, some of our challenges, we're still trying to financially rebound with our garages with the COVID impacts, and then we, we've got some unfunded positions because of that. We've got a finance position and a garage, not manager, but leadership position to help manage the garages that have gone unfunded last couple of years. Some of the opportunities, I'll talk about a parking study here in a little bit. We're doing some major projects on garage elevator replacement this year. If I never had to manage another elevator ever, I would definitely do that. Managing elevators is terribly expensive, terribly difficult, and the parts are not available for repairs in a timely manner in a lot of ways, so that's why we're doing some replacement that's much needed. But I'll jump into, right, right into the goals. After telling you that our overall budget request is 5.495 million, it is a decrease, but that decrease is because it's some major capital that's not needed like the elevators and such next year. Personnel, no significant changes, there are some salary adjustments and such, but, and then supplies are down because some, some of the lower expected fuel projections and the fact that we've electrified some of the Parking Enforcement vehicles. So, we've got, this is a big substantial reduction on the bank charge expenses. We've made some changes to how that gets managed and processed, which is saving us some money, and then some other slight reductions in some of our different contracts and posted rates and such. So, the capital I talked about, we are, we had major capital requests that were the one-time funding through the former Community Revitalization Enhancement District, one-time funding as part of this 2024 budget that goes away. But then at the same time, we are looking at our 455 Fund, that's our parking meter fund, to reinvest those parking meter dollars back into the downtown for maintenance projects, whether streets, sidewalks, lights, et cetera. This is probably going to get the most attention, and it has, and some of the questions that have already come our way. Why do we need to do a parking study? The last one was done in 2018, and it did provide some rate plans that go into the future, but it didn't do the, we, we need to do a more holistic, comprehensive review of all things parking services as we're entering, you know, beyond the toddler stage and growing. So, a review of the parking processes, the procedures, rate structures, fines, fees, technologies that we use, that's why we're asking for a hefty chunk in that, at that funding line. It's complex, there are a lot of parts that need to be studied, and, and on top of that, the public input process needs to be managed properly as we, as we take on a study like that. So, that's why that request is such that it is. And I'll just, just, we would go through an RFP process for that. We wouldn't just pick a single vendor without asking for qualific, or, you know, whether it's an RFP, Request for Proposals, or an RFQ, Request for Qualifications, we would look for an industry leader that works on municipal parking studies to help us with that. The 2018 study didn't, wasn't as comprehensive as what we're proposing, and it was about 75,000. So, we do expect this to be in the upwards of 150,000 to 200,000 if we do the holistic, big study. We need to increase our garage revenues. We've got some great things happening up in the Trades District, which should help increase the utilization of the Trades Garage. Fourth Street Garage has been doing really good in their occupancy, as well as Morton and, and Walnut, but just trying to, as anytime we can, move that Parker that's going to be multiple hours onto the street into the garage. That, that's something we're really aiming for to increase as well. Obviously, working with a lot of partners on this, especially with Trades Garage and all the development up there. License plate recognition at public garages. We're trying to determine, and this is part of what a study will help us understand, is how should we really be operating our garages? Should they be ga, should they have gates? Should they not have gates? Should they be paid by phone? These are all things that we know we need to study, but the license plate reading technology is also something that we've found IU's made great progress with and something that we want to explore. Same thing. And this kind of ties into that as well, moving to allowing pay-by-phone for the parking garages as well as the pay stations. No major impacts there, overall 5.495 million dollar budget request, and happy to answer all the questions you may have. That was quicker than I thought.
Thank you, are there questions? Councilmember Stossberg, then Rosari?
In the budget book, it has goal two being upgrade downtown meters.
Oh, that, oh shoot, we pulled that. That's, yeah, that was a change, I'm sorry. We didn't get that reflected in the budget book. Originally, we were wanting to not only do the study, but also fund meter upgrades next year. We can't do both of those in the same year.
Okay, okay, thank you. My other question, which was really my, my main question, one of the, one of your, your funds is the Alternative Transportation Fund, and I'm just wondering if you could tell me where the Alternative Transportation Fund, like where that money comes from in terms of source, and then also if there are particular programs or initiatives that it's used for, because it just feels a little bit weird for me to hear the Alternative Transportation Fund being used for vehicular parking.
One of the things that I would recommend long-term, or in the next year or two that we change is the name of that fund. We don't refer to alternative transportation anymore, we refer to multimodal. This is a fund that's existed, I think, since the 90s or before. It is a fund that is funded through the revenues of the Neighborhood Parking Program. I love it when they shake their head, yes. So, it's funded through the Neighborhood Parking Program, and it's a shared revenue line that engineering utilizes and parking services utilizes. Does that answer your question enough?
Yeah, I think so, so you said a share between engineering and parking services.
Does anybody else get in on? Oh, planning, oh, Planning does as well.
And Planning, and then that's where our sidewalk committee budget comes from? Is that what I just heard over there? Okay. Okay, so, so it should, okay, yes, that answers my question, thank you.
Councilmember Rosari?
Thank you first and foremost for answering the questions that I sent ahead of time in this, in this regard.
Those are still in draft form, we're going to tweak them a little bit.
Thanks, that's great. A sort of follow-up to that, though, and so, I mean, accepting that they're in draft form. It's a little, can, can you explain to me, because we're talking about lots of different things when we're talking about parking, right? And so, when we're thinking about the study, we're not just asking questions about fees, for example, but also thinking about tickets and thi, can you, can you sort of explain better that, that whole ecosystem that we're talking about?
So, it's, it's, it's not, it's a parking study, it's a full-fledged parking study. So, it's not a parking rate study, it's not a parking permit-type study. It's going to encompass all of those things. So, it's going to look at our rate structures for the various rates we charge, whether the per cost hourly, the hourly, the per hour cost of the meters, the per hour cost of the garages, the permit cost for the garages, the neighborhood residential permit costs, the, what technologies we should be utilizing. We're talking about the license plate recognition system in here. We want to do that probably, whether or not, we want to probably do that either way for some, a lot of reasons, but, so what technologies we use for managing the garages, manage, what technologies we actually use for on-street metered parking? Are there going to be meters into the future? And kind of goes back to Councilmember Stossberg's point of, you know, there was a note in here about parking meter upgrades, and that's what we need to know. We need to do some focus sessions with industry leaders, with residents, with parking users of what technology should be on the streets to pay for parking? Should it be a kiosk every block or so, every half a block or so? Should we have individual meters? Should we take cash? And so, it's all of it together.
And then what are like the, to you, the hypothesis that we're going into this with? What are the big What are the big, I mean, I think you've laid out some of the big areas of concern and areas of focus, but do we have any ideas or theories going into this? Are we, you know?
We're pretty open. Like I said, you know, when I refer to the toddler stage of the Parking Services Division of Public Works, you know, it is the first time, these are the first few years of this division being one division that does all things parking management. So, it's helping us understand what we should look like as a division and how we, where we should focus. So, there's no preconceived ideas here on if rates should go up or down, if fines should go up or down, like, it's an open book at this point.
I have strong views on hypotheses, but.
We look forward to your input, we look forward to your input at the, at the public outreach, or at the sessions where we do that, yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. First, there was a mention of an opportunity to use creed funds for some garage maintenance things. Is that, that's not proposed, you're just highlighting it as a future possibility?
No, that's, it was just highlighting what we had for our 2024 budget.
Oh, okay.
Those one-time creed dollars funded the garage elevator replacement projects.
Got it. Regarding the, so you described it as a parking study, does that, would that extend into parking policy by your description?
Absolutely.
Okay. And so, while parking management is housed entirely under Parking Services, I would say parking policy is not, which is land use policy and planning, it's engineering. So, first, are planning and engineering involved in the study in terms of setting its, you know, goals, what questions it's asking, like?
Hundred percent.
What the outcomes are?
It would be a team effort.
And then second, will the Parking Commission be involved in that as well?
It depends on the future of the Parking Commission.
Let's assume it exists. Will it be involved?
If it exists into the future, of course it would. If it's part of a larger combined commission, we would involve that commission.
Okay. I look forward to that in either case. Thank you.
Thanks.
Further council questions?
I have one.
Councilmember Pete Mansman.
Yes, so in the memo, it talks about the rate study. It says the rate study will also, which you've now said is actually more than just a rate study for parking, says the rate study will also include a proposal of why the Parking Services Division should implement new meter technology, explore pay-by-phone, LPR, and the possibility of gateless garages. So, it sounds to me like you're already prejudging what this study is going to tell us to do.
No, only, no, I disagree. One of the things we definitely want to look into still is the license plate reader technology for a lot of reasons, but we are open, I mean, it's a rate study, it's a comprehensive study, we have no preconceived outcomes in mind.
But you're saying the study will look at license plate recognition, and, but you have license plate recognition technology as a separate goal?
We have, what uses that, we have some ideas on where we want to specifically use it now, how it's utilized in a larger fashion would also be part of the study.
I see. Then I also wanted to ask about the, in regard to LPR, so we already have the gates, right? They're there, they're paid for. There are sunk costs, so could we look at not replacing them until they're at their end of their lifespan? Because else, it's kind of like wasting some money.
While there are sunk costs into that technology and everything, we spend a lot of money on repairs for people that drive through them, and we don't get insurance claim money back on. Those gates are damaged at least once a month in most every garage in some way, shape, or form. So, it's, you know, again, we're hopeful in that regard that we could make some changes that will benefit everyone, but we'll also make that part of a study as well.
Okay. And my last question is about accessibility of ways of paying for parking. I, I'm concerned if we do more kiosks and/or pay-by-phone methods that rely on people having a smartphone or a credit card, we're leaving out some people who don't have those things. Is this a part of your?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely part of what we would be utilizing the study to help us with, whether that's, and this has been talked about before with the previous controller wanting to get rid of all coin payments, which we didn't do, but, you know, whether there's other technologies or options like prepaid ATM facilities, or we'll certainly explore all options to be as equitable as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Rosenberg.
Thank you. Fines, fees, and technology, a bit of recent, I have become interested in why we void tickets, parking tickets. So, I was looking that up in the system, and I saw some, some reasons, like, I was in a coffee shop when I was adding money to my meter, and like that ticket got voided, and then like, oh, I was walking out to my car when the person was there giving me a ticket, and like that ticket got voided, just some examples. So, just wondering, like, what we're doing about that, because I guess I don't, I think that's very inequitable, and then I think we do have awesome staff out there, you know, with tickets. And I like ticketing, and I think, you know, we have staff doing that, we have staff then in the appeals process, we've got resources with the little tickety electronic things and envelopes and all that stuff, so how can, I don't know, clean up that system or have a better straightforward system of if you run out of time on a meter, you have to pay your ticket?
Was there a question in there?
Yeah, like, what are we doing to address that?
We are as equitable as we always can be, and that's basic, that's the basic answer I can give you right now. We need to be able to have some ability to take into account some individual circumstances as they occur to provide high levels of customer service. I don't think we're doing anything inequitable there, I think we're certainly trying to best manage the system. We have, we had an instance today of someone that didn't speak English, didn't read English, got a ticket because they didn't understand something. We voided that ticket, and we provided translation services so that they could better understand. We try to, we're certainly not trying to be inequitable, and so, but we do need the ability to provide high levels of customer service.
Okay, I do think that's a different kind of example, but thank you.
Does that conclude your question?
Oh, yeah, that's all for me.
Okay, any, anything else from anyone? I had maybe a couple of questions. Gosh, I missed my, well, I put away the slide that I was looking at, but, so, you note as a success, 2,700 scooter tickets approximately in 2023, and it was down to 540 this year so far. So, I would note that ticketing in itself is a success, I think, and I, and looks like behaviorally, it's having an effect with the geofencing, so congratulations. Now, the questions I have, one is, this is a area of downtown that we took it in, right? So, the problem, of course, extends beyond that, and I get a lot of complaints about neighborhood, and I'm sure a lot of other people do, about scooters being left on sidewalks and so forth. Is there a plan to expand the enforcement so that we address that problem?
So, we, if we have a neighborhood, correct me if I say anything wrong here, Michelle, but if we have a neighborhood parking enforcement officer in a neighborhood that observes a scooter blocking a sidewalk, they're going to issue a citation in that location as well. It's, we have less staff out in the neighborhoods compared to in the core. So, that's, that's part of the issue. One of the things that we're likely to move forward with is an RFP for one provider of these other transportation technologies to better manage the whole system. So, Jeff Jackson, Transportation Demand Manager in the Economic Sustainable Development Department, has taken up not all things scooters, but kind of lead on that, and what we found is the most successful programs usually only have one vendor in terms of compliance and such, so that you can really hold them accountable, build in things like you must build 100 new corrals in core neighborhoods adjacent to the universe, you know, you can put those parameters into that RFP, but our original intent was to expand out into the neighborhoods with the corrals, and that still would probably be our intent with that, but we'd be moving towards that RFP for one provider to help manage all these things. I'll be the first to admit, it's a problem in the neighborhoods with the scooters, but it's a challenge to, you know, get after all of them.
Okay, that's good. Let's make progress on that if we can, because it especially affects people with mobility problems on sidewalks. My second question, will I still have, do I have any more time? It's gone away. A minute. Are we in any way subsidizing the scooter companies? Or are we, are the enforcement, is enforcement covered by fines? Or is it, or, you know, are we expending staff time that isn't, that we're not recouping?
Let me, before I give you a formal, my inclination and everything that I know about it is the answer is no, between the amount of fines we bring in, the annual licensing, and the cost of what we've put in, it's just whether or not that one-time capital, let me, we'll run some numbers, I know we looked all this up, Jane's team.
Okay.
And, and I think we provided some of that, but I don't want to, I don't want to misstate anything here.
Okay, that would be helpful. Thank you. If there are no other questions, this is on Parking Services, we'll go to the public. There are members of the public, one is coming.
And for folks on Zoom, if you want to make a comment, you can do so using the raise hand feature in the reactions tab, or the more tab if you can't find it, or send a message to the meeting host.
Welcome. Familiar face, please state your name.
Hi, everybody, Steve Olin. I am the Chair of the City Parking Commission this year, and I have a lot of thoughts, but I'd love to see the slide that talks about the garages, if you wouldn't mind putting it back to that. Coming up here. I think it's goal number two, that's it. I have a lot of respect for Public Works, I have a lot of respect for the Parking Services Division, I think that the new division is a good idea, and on most topics, I trust their judgment. But a headline like this is a fundamental reason of why parking as a whole, parking policy as a whole, was not consolidated in any one department. It should not be our goal to, just to retroactively justify the building of a garage by saying that our goal should be to increase revenue for the sake of revenue, or to pay for the garage. We should have, if this was always going to be a goal, we should have thought twice about building garages in the past. I have too much to say, and that I only have two minutes for. I don't think that Park, that Parking Services or that Public Works should be setting parking price policy. There's a reason that Jeff Jackson works in the Economic and Sustainable Development Department. The formative document that created the Parking Commission itself called for it to consider, to be able to get revenue to develop parking plans, and no, the commission hasn't been directly consulted yet about the potential for this plan. So, I'd urge you to take those ideas with a grain of salt, consider that parking economic policy may be different than any other parking policies that the department otherwise does a great job of managing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olin. Thank you for your input and your service in the Parking Commission. Deputy Attorney Kulak, are there any takers online?
No, no takers online.
All right, then we'll come back to council for final comments on Parking Services, if there are any. Councilmember Rosenberg.
Thank you, thank you. Parking holds a special place in my heart. It is probably the straw that broke the camel's back of why I ran for city council, the Fourth Street Parking Garage. So, I guess I just kind of, I mean, this is just a tiny note, but kind of consider the amount of money we spend on vehicles, where they travel, and where we house them in parking garages is unsettling and discouraging to me. When the Fourth Street Parking Garage was built, just a little reminiscing, you know, it was $18 million, that's about $36,000 per parking spot roughly, and I guess I just think about what we're going through right now with the number of unhoused people we have, which is just a little under 500, I think, and wouldn't it be neat if we decided to spend that much money per unhoused person than on housing cars in one garage? Thanks.
Thank you. Further comment? Okay. Seeing none, then we'll move on to Sanitation Division. Did we lose Director Weisen? Did you have a comment? Okay, well, why don't you take it? So we can find the.
Well, we're good. No, 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 I will not. You know, a lot of my comments have been around, you know, us thinking and making further reflections on this long-term goal that we have to move towards outcome-based budgeting, and as a new person on the council, the organization of Parking Services, I realize, became actually a little bit difficult in thinking about the budget, just because there's so many different elements that are hard to, though I get why they're related, they're hard to compare budgetarily, and so, you know, thinking about, for example, revenues that are produced in the sort of total ecosystem of parking versus like the amount of money that's spent on Parking Services, like, that's just a really interesting, I think, makes it difficult to have conversations around, you know, sort of what we would think of as outcome-based budgeting, you know, so like, what is the outcomes we're trying to do here? What, is this investment bringing back the return and so on and so forth, similar to the ways that we were talking with parking, so, with parks, not parking. But, so, so that is something I'd be really interested, I think, in the next year as we're working on this task force and sort of thinking earlier about this, you know, I think that's going to be a hard area to work with, but, you know, I just want to thank the team at Public Works, and thank you for this Herculean effort of giving six hours of presentations straight. But definitely, to Director Wall, thank you for what you're doing. I did say I have strong opinions about things around parking, because I clearly don't care what anybody thinks about me, like, I think that our parking is way too cheap, you know, and, and I do think that, that it's something that we need to start thinking about in terms of the, you know, flow of transportation and, you know, the ecosystem of people movement, et cetera. Anyway, so, I mean, that's, I can start political problems for myself later by having these conversations, but anyways, I just thank you all for what you're doing. Thanks.
Okay, if that concludes comment, we'll move on now to Sanitation.
All right, Adam Weisen, one more, two more times. So, Sanitation Division is responsible for writing solid waste collection on a weekly, solid waste and recycling collection on a weekly basis, and overseeing our yard waste program as well. Under the direction of Lazarus Sears, newer to the Director of Sanitation position this last nine, 10 months or so, really doing great, you know, great things down at sanitation. It's, you know, daily task to get everything picked up that the residents put out, and just really value the work of the whole team down there. They're out there, starting at about 4:30 in the morning, all weather conditions, so, you know, days like today are the days that, you know, you're really thinking about the staff down there, you know, 100-plus heat indexes, and then when it's in the middle of the winter, and as long as it's below, or above negative 10 windshield, those folks are out there doing this, this hard work that's much needed for so many reasons. So, fully staffed, we're at 24 full-time employees, and then during the peak of the yard waste season, we'll often hire a couple temporary part-times. Some of our successes, we're currently still maintaining a higher-than EPA standard for our diversion rates, meaning the amount that we keep from going to the landfill, landfill, based on the total tonnages we collect. Like I mentioned, we're fully staffed, which is great, and we're working really hard, and it's a success, but it's also a challenge, keeping these very complicated trucks up and running day in, day out, and on the road, doing the services that they do. Some of the challenges, again, trucks, so we're going to be coming back to the council here soon on some requests for some changes to some, well, we'll be back to the council here in the next month or so about some sanitation truck requests, but some of the opportunities here is we're moving from tri-axle or dual-axle? Dual? Tandem axle to single-axle vehicles, so less tires to maintain, less wear and tear on the roads, and more maneuverable. Some of the other opportunities, we're still trying to best utilize our software program there to manage all aspects of sanitation services from. there to manage all aspects of sanitation services, from customer service to tracking, data tracking, et cetera. So always working on that. And then making sure we're providing the proper amounts of protective equipment and gear for all of our crews. So when we talk about our goals, first, just to mention, it's a $4.64 million annual budget request. It is a decrease from last year's request by about 6.6%. And I'll explain some of that in a moment. Personnel is down a bit, just reflecting our actual categorical spending, but we also know that there may be some other implications with some of the studies we're doing. Again, lower projected fuel costs, but, and some overall reductions in the other services, that's the big line. And we can talk more about that later. So when we talk about improving route efficiency, this has been an ongoing goal since we've modernized the Sanitation Division, and it's going to always be a goal. We can, as, as we utilize our software systems and as we really work with the drivers to make sure that we're doing the routes in the most efficient way, we're always going to focus on that. Beyond that, we do have annual subscription fees for this with our software provider and hardware software provider that are going to maintain into the future. You know, some of these benefits are going to be fuel consumption, employee productivity, and vehicle monitoring is another big aspect of this. So what are, how hard are we braking? How fast are we accelerating? What should, what standards should we really be striving for there? So again, we're going to be doing this annually, on an annual basis, but it's always going to be a continued goal. Talked about the efficiency of the single axle trucks. You know, overall sanitation truck, based on the heavy-duty use, you're going to get a maximum lifespan of usually 10 years, seven in some cases. We've got several trucks that are at least 12, 13 years old still in our fleet that we're looking to replace. Capital replacement in that regard, we did some rate adjustments last year, so we are better able to fund this capital. And it's been, you know, we're really looking forward to getting those new trucks in. A sanitation truck on the lowest end is about $380,000. On the higher ends, it can be over a half a million dollars, depending on the, the different types that are available. One of the biggest issues we've had has been availability. So what we're coming to the council with here soon, we've got some trucks available. We need to make some decisions soon. And, and it's, it's just been a real challenge. Not only the availability of new vehicles, but from the time we were placing vehicles, placing orders for vehicles to when they are actually delivered, we're exceeding 24 months at times. That is a huge challenge, when you're waiting two-plus years to get a vehicle delivered. Just with recycling rates, again, we're always trying to meet that diversion rate. This is all the tonnages of everything we collect. So this is going to be scrap, appliances, large items, traditional solid waste through the carts, and then recycling. And that's how you determine that diversion rate. We had a couple of years before '23 that we were below EPA standards. We've been back above for a few years here. But we're also seeing our volumes across the board on solid waste ticking up a little bit higher than we had planned and expected. No major impacts there. But the other part about this is when we talk about education, outreach, and, you know, sustainability when it comes to sanitation, that's something we're involved with, but that's also a community-wide effort. You know, our expertise at the Sanitation Division isn't expertise in outreach, or isn't education and outreach. Our expertise is getting things collected and off the streets and disposed of properly. So, you know, with the education and outreach things, we need to be partners in that with the Economic Sustainable Development Department, with the Commission on Sustainability, with the Monroe, they've got a new name, but the solid wa...
Waste Reduction District.
Waste Reduction District, you know? City residents fund a vast majority, fund a majority of the dollars that go to the Waste Reduction District. So those are big partnerships we want to be part of, but maybe not, you know, we are a small but mighty staff down there from an administrative perspective, so it is going to take those partnerships on really trying to make, move the, move the lever community-wide on all things solid waste management. Just as a reminder, the Sanitation Division only picks up from residential units of four or less. So we don't pick up from anything commercial, we don't pick up from anything nonprofit, and we don't pick up from any multifamily housing above four units. Overall, $4.64 million total request, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director Weisand. Questions on sanitation? Councilmember Pete Munt Smith.
Yes, thank you. And welcome to Mr. Sears for his first budget hearing. The capital expense budget in the first table in the memo says it's only $130,000, but then when you read about the goal about increased truck efficiency, you're asking for $840,000. So is there an error in that first table?
We will make sure to review that and make sure we have that to be as accurate as possible. I'll just make a quick note here that with seven different divisional budgets and some dense timelines compared to some years past, we have found a few things, like with the Facilities Division, we're going to identify those, make sure you get amended budget books and things like that, working with Controller McClellan and Cheryl.
And since you did mention the Waste Reduction District as a partner with increasing recycling, but one of your goals was to work with MCCSE schools to teach kids how to better recycle, but as you know, the Waste District does that already, so...
Yeah, we're, you know, we're, we want to partner in all those things. One of our goals is also to work with the student population with Indiana University. I know that was a highlight in one of the questions of why focus on, you know, the university or things like that. And what I would say is, you know, our longtime residents that have one time of their recycle not being picked up because of Styrofoam, remember, they can't put Styrofoam in. Every year, we get big turnover in August and May, and that may not be, so we do focus on those areas. It's where we tend to have our highest levels of noncompliance with recycling. So, you know, we, we want to work on those education efforts that are more direct outreach. And we also want to do some of the fun things in the schools with the kids.
Okay. I appreciate that the general fund subsidy for the sanitation services has decreased this year to $800,000. That's still a significant amount, and I wonder if, if you plan to decrease that in the future, since as you mentioned, it's a service that not all Bloomington residents can benefit from.
It's been a debate for about every year I've been Public Works Director. We've never found a way to not get, provide some level of general fund support. I don't see it going away entirely. We can always strive to reduce it. We hope not, you know, like this year, this year, there was 1.4 million set aside as potential general fund support in 2024. When we've looked at our rate structures, when we've looked at our capital purchasing needs for the years to come, we're comfortable with the $800,000 number for next year. But some of that, you know, we're always hopeful to reduce it and not use it all. And some of that's just going to come down to what tonnages we collect, what our process... One great thing we have is a really good recycling processing rate right now, and that can really help us into the future because it's a quarter of the cost we were paying in years past.
Thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you. I'd like to follow up on the same. My recollection is that often, over the last four or five years, we were budgeting something like the 1.5 million range from the general fund, but typically only spending around a million. Is that, are those ballparks right?
Ballpark, yeah.
And so, and then, of course, we also did change rates to address the fact that they'd been flat, as well as some of the cross subsidy among, you know, Bloomington taxpayers. Is this 800,000, do you think that's a more accurate reflection of what the actual cost will be? And is this something of a change in practice of trying to tend it exactly that? Or do you think we'll see a similar trend where there's a cushion or a buffer kind of built in, and you might only spend 500 or 600 of the, you know, budget at 800, for instance?
How do I? I'm hope, so the 1.4 number from this year was bigger than we expected, and it was because we didn't know at the time when we were doing our budgets what our solid waste disposal cost was going to be and what our recycling processing cost was going to be. So former Controller Underwood went very conservative on those numbers last year. We're hopeful to be less than 800 this year, but we just don't know yet. We're trending towards that number for 2024 still, so that's why we were comfortable with putting that number for 2025. You know, so we're hopeful to always have it going down, and we're hopeful to never spend that full amount.
Okay. And for this year, then, if there's $600,000 unspent, that just would revert into the general fund at the end of the year?
Let us get back to you on that, because some of it's going to depend, you know, not all 600 may have been that, well, let us get back to you on that one. Let's explore that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Rosenberg.
My typical question, like the dear question, composting? No, no. Um, yard waste bins. You know, I emailed you that I had no idea these were available.
Have been for six years.
But that's so cool. So people can get yard waste bins, and then it's seasonal pickup with those bins. Is that right?
April through November.
Okay. I have to, I had one more question. I'm sorry. I was toggling back to where that is. Okay. And then, oh, do people talk to you at Sanitation about like more receptacles for like dog waste?
Community-wide or...
Yeah, just like people on dog walks, you know?
Not an area we're looking to get overly involved in.
Extra trash cans. Well, because I just wanted to put it out there, I had this idea that we could get stickers that just say, "Dog-waste-friendly trash can," that we can put on our trash cans as neighbors, and then people know they can use your trash can. Thank you for that creative, innovative idea.
That is something I fully support. So as you walk Fido down the road and you see Kate's garbage can with a sticker that says you can put it in...
Yes.
Yeah. We'll work with you on that.
I just feel like it's useful, okay, for, I mean, neighborhoods that don't have trash cans. Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
I hope residents do that already.
Other questions? Councilmember Berstasper.
Thank you. I just want to clarify the yard waste bin thing, that you guys charge for those.
There's a one-time fee of 50?
70, I think, because I just bought one.
$70? Yeah, that's just the actual cost to us.
Yeah.
And then it's a dollar per dump?
Yeah. I just wanted to clarify that for the public, because that exchange implied that maybe you could just request one for free, and I just requested one, and it is beautiful, but it does cost money. Thank you.
Further questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public for comments on the Sanitation Division budget of Public Works budget for 2025.
And again, any members of the public wishing to make a comment can do so by raising their hand, using the reactions or more tab, or sending a chat to the meeting host. And there are no hands raised at the moment.
Okay. Come back to council for comment on sanitation. Councilmember Rosenberg and then Asari.
One quick comment. I still wholeheartedly believe in the pay-as-you-throw model. I think it's an awesome way for people to only pay for the trash that they produce and a wonderful way to encourage folks to decrease the trash that they create. Thanks.
Councilmember Asari.
Wanted to thank you again for answering the questions I sent ahead of time here. Just a comment that I've been making as often, I think, as it's, as it's been relevant, but I think with the, with the strategy around education around recycling, I think that this is a sort of common pitfall that we're seeing throughout our thinking around engagement, is that we identify one pain point that we think is the pain point, and then we go, well, we need to educate people about it, because the thing is that they're not educated about it. So we spend money, and then we educate them, and then next year, we just do the same. We're just going to do that forever. I think that we also need to be thinking about figuring out exactly why it is that, for example, you know, people aren't recycling, as an example, or why they keep recycling certain things that, you know, you keep telling them that they shouldn't, or, you know, why the, the things on top of the boxes aren't really working, or, you know, like, so I think we just need to think about, you know, actually identifying, doing some user research, right? And then putting funds into ways to improve the user experience, to improve the outcomes that we're seeking to do. And, I mean, this is just, I think, a comment across the board, almost more for Deputy Mayor Knapp than you. But, you know, I, again, I think we really need to scrutinize the ways that we're thinking about public engagement and the outcomes that come with that public engagement, so that we don't just justify our public engagement by activity, but rather clearly pointing to things that we want to achieve through whatever inputs we're putting into the system. And I think that was clearly illustrated in the discussions in the budget book around, investing particularly $300,000 on helping students to better understand our recycling processes. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Flaherty?
Sure. It's worth addressing. I know it's a difficult topic to fix structurally over time, but the 800,000 or million or whatever it ends up being from the general fund, it's a subsidy, we call it, for the folks receiving the services. It is inherently inequitable, because everybody has to have sanitation services. This isn't something like a parking garage, where we say, okay, we're going to subsidize that with public dollars, too. I'd also like to see costs, you know, revenues cover costs in that context as well. But you can make other kind of arguments that this is kind of like a, just like a bike lane or a park or anything else, that they're, you know, not everybody's going to use the infrastructure. That's okay. We're still going to pay for it because it matters. Sanitation services are completely different. Every single person has to have sanitation services. Everybody is paying for sanitation services. But people in five units or more are paying twice. They're paying for their own sanitation services, and they're paying for a portion of City of Bloomington sanitation services for the folks who live in four-unit homes or fewer. As to groups, the one who's paying twice is disproportionately lower wealth, lower income. And so it's a really problematic inequity. We've tried to address it slowly over time. We've made some very, very minimal progress last term. I understand there are other inequities existing within these systems that are concerns, flat rates, for instance, you know, relative to folks, you know, people's differential ability to pay. So there are multiple intersection, intersecting equity issues and concerns. So again, no easy fix, but I'd be remiss if we didn't talk about it, because it's actually a pretty sizable amount of funding and cross subsidy from one group of residents to another for a service that everybody has to pay for. We really, really, really should be striving for a model where revenues cover costs in sanitation, in the same way they're required to by law for City Bloomington Utilities, for instance, or other utility services. So, thank you.
Councilmember Pete Munt Smith.
Well, I was basically going to say the same thing that Councilmember Flaherty said, and he was more eloquent, so I'll just leave it at that.
Any other comments?
I'll just say that I really appreciate you and your staff's work on sanitation. I think we've made huge improvements over time. And back years ago, the whole operation was pretty haphazard, and it's been really improved tremendously. But I do agree with a lot of the comments that have been made here. I wanted to add, in concert with Councilmember Rosenberg's comments about composting, that I think that there was quite a lot of efforts devoted to leaf composting. I think that, you know, kitchen waste composting could be, could be a model program of some kind, and I think it can be done safely and cleanly and without vermin and so forth. But people have to be instructed how to do it, probably, and maybe there needs to be some sort of city program, because it does consist of a lot of the weight of waste of, or weight, I should say, of our solid waste stream. And also, if it goes to a landfill, it's producing methane. So it should be a priority for us, and like to talk to you more about that.
Councilmember Berstasper.
I just want to chime in, since you mentioned composting, that I'm actually sitting on a, on a committee right now with the Solid Waste District, and I'm, is that, is that the new name for it?
Waste Reduction District.
Thank you. The Waste Reduction District about composting and having, and so we're discussing initiatives like that. And there was a City of Bloomington staff member on that committee until they... And there was a City of Bloomington staff member on that committee until they left and there's not a current replacement for that position. So that, that's, we're working on it. We're working on it. I don't, I don't know if you all know.
I'd like to follow up and figure out how we can help you.
Okay, thanks. I'll, I'll, we'll chat.
Okay, terrific. That's good news. Thank you for that. All right, our last topic is the Street and Traffic Division of Public Works.
We got this. We believe in you.
I believe in me.
Can you make it five minutes?
This is the biggest one. I know.
It's the finale.
I know. So the Street Division of the Public Works Department headed up by Joe Van Deavender, a long-time city staff member. Danny Bitner, our Deputy Director, Jeff Morris, Freddie Love and Tony Carroll all make up the leadership team. I'd be remiss not to mention Dana Workman and all her hard work on behalf of the division, as well as all the 46 full-time staff members that are doing all the things that the Street Division is responsible for. If it is in the public right-of-way, the Street Division probably maintains it outside of the urban forestry program and in parks. So streets and paving, patching, alley maintenance, utility excavation repairs, snow and ice removal, sidewalk and side paths, maintenance coordination, trees and mowing in the public right-of-way. To a lot of extents, we deal with unsafe trees, less trimming, mowing lots of public right-of-ways, managing the overall traffic signal and sign network, as well as pavement markings, and then working to assist the Administrative Division in streetlights and equipment. I know I mentioned earlier about streetlights and LEDs and such, that we've got all kinds of them that are managed by, or that we partner with Duke Energy on. We also own about 100, we own a lot of the more decorative pedestrian-scale lighting and stuff that we own and, and maintain. So there is that aspect of it as well. These crews are busy year in, you know, day in, day out, year-round. And just really appreciate all the work that they do on, on all the things that they're responsible for. Some of our successes, we've been really successful with the Community Crossing Matching Grant Program. And we need to continue to be successful in that because that brings outside dollars in to help us fund our ever-growing need for pavement restoration dollars. We've been trying to upgrade our equipment and last year, thanks to the council, we actually added a sidewalk supervisor and some positions to assist with our overall sidewalk management efforts. Our challenges, we have aging infrastructure here. So we know based on the studies we've done on our pavement condition indexes that we need to increase the amount of funding that goes towards pavement maintenance for all users of the transportation network, whether it be the transit buses, the bike rider, the scooter user, the car driver. We need to keep investing in pavement maintenance and at higher levels than we have in the past. Vehicle and equipment replacement, another challenge here, just on timing and availability. We've been having a harder time filling vacant positions that require the CDL, so we've done some innovative training programs with Ivy Tech. Thanks to them as a great partner. You know, we've got rising expenses with the different technologies that we're using and higher material and outside vendor costs is just some additional challenges. Some of our opportunities, again, the Operations Center is a huge opportunity for the whole department, Street Division included. We're working on some more public-facing GIS mapping dashboards, as well as many other programs that I've mentioned in, in different ways. Overall, budget request for the Street Division in 2025 is 11.868 million. You see, that's quite a big decrease in, from 2024's budget. 2024's budget had a lot of one-time expenditures, whether it was the ARPA dollars, the Creed dollars, vehicle purchasing equipment. So there is a big reduction there, but we're looking at other funding opportunities that the Controller's Office, Mayor's Office and others are talking about. Just some of the budget notes, again, we are, we've got some pretty big increases and decreases here, mostly related to one-time funding and the capital outlays, and we'll get into the other services a little bit more later. So improve the pavement condition index. We are trying to resurface at least 12 lane miles each and every year. We're trying to do the proactive crack sealing. Crack sealing doesn't actually improve the index number, but it improves the overall lifespan of the road surface. We can get into that detail way more in-depth later. But this is really important and I can't overstress the amount that we need to keep investing in this. When we first did our, when we did our initial pavement condition index study in 2017, we were at a 57-plus percent index, or 57 percent, or 57 rating on a 100 scale citywide. And the seven years since then, we've decreased 5% citywide. That is due to, you know, we, we knew that going in, that we needed to increase that. We've not increased it yet. And excited to work with Controller McClellan and others on figuring out ways to get creative with that, those funding opportunities. Oh, big thing to note here is on these capital outlays of the community crossing, we are trying to max those out. So we can go for up to a million dollars per match for a project. This was the first year we'd ever done that. We were successful. West Third Street is about to be repaved from Patterson all the way out to Franklin and Wendell. And we only were able to do that because we budgeted that full million-dollar amount to be the match to end up. Let's move on to sidewalk condition index. This has been a topic that we've talked with a lot of the council members about, how we can manage sidewalks holistically in a better way. The most economical thing we can do on our end is the sidewalk grinding program. We have, I think it's 8,080 trip hazards removed in the last four or five years because of the grinding program. That is huge. And the most economical way we can improve trip hazards citywide. We know this is a focus of the council and others and we know we need to have a more strategic citywide vision here, so duly noted. But we are making good progress. You know, we've got a big request for next year on, on the linear feat, but, you know, in the last couple of years, we've, we've made major improvements and we've done a lot of great work. The reason the 2024 number is still so low is we're about to do our contract for most of the amount that will be completed this year. It's just not been executed yet. Just to note here, when we talk about all these improvements, our, our material costs are up. We're able, we're, we're doing, we're not able to do as much as we were in previous years on some things because simply those material costs are higher. Snow control and tactical winter operations, due to the investments we've been making with council-approved budgets the last years, we've gone to the brine pretreatment, much lower cost than the actual rock salt when you turn it into the brine and it's a preventative effort before the snow and ice actually hits. So that's something that we've been strategic about in these last several years. Maintenance and care of the trees in the right-of-way. So we're mainly responsible with removing hazardous trees, unless so with pruning and things like that. And those crews do that almost on a year-round basis. They get devoted to the paving crew for a few months in our biggest part of the paving season. But we also coordinate very closely with Parks and Recs on all of this. Haskell and, and the team in urban forestry are often our first calls. Because you need a picture of a cute kid every now and then. Sign compliance. So without getting into definitions on retroreflectivity and other things, we need to make sure the thousands and thousands of traffic management signs throughout the city are not only inventoried and known of all their locations, but also inspected regularly and replaced when damaged or in need of damage, or need of replacement. We are making major improvements based on our 2024 budgets. And those one-time costs that I said are not in this budget, a lot of that's traffic maintenance. So we are making major technology improvements to our traffic management system through all the, trying to get all 83 of our traffic signals that we're responsible for maintaining up to a similar technology that talks to each other and can do cool things like actual traffic management. And this is a huge expenditure in 2024. We'll have some ongoing costs into the future with that, but I think we'll see community-wide benefit there. When Joe and his team kept referring to AI, I was like, how are you using AI for traffic management? I'm sure you can, but they were only referring to Applied Information Traffic Signal Equipment. And so I didn't know what they were talking about for quite a while. Yeah, 11.86 million overall request and just really appreciate the work of these crews. It's been, they're a really great team and have really great leadership with their leadership team, as do all the divisions of Public Works. And so, thank you, thank you, thank you. With 10 seconds left, we're done. Sorry, we're not taking any questions on this one. We'll just finish there.
Thank you, and I will put you through the question period. Councilmember Asari?
What is a good PCI?
We want to be 60 or above. That would be ideal.
And where do we think we'll be after this year?
53, hopefully.
Okay, so, so the goal was?
Oh, after next year, we would hope to, based on what improvements we're making this year and next year, we hope to go up a percentage point. But that also, yeah, we hope to go up a percentage.
Is 60 a, would everyone say that 60 is a good standard or is that what we're saying is a good standard based on our baseline?
Uh, it's more based on our baseline. There are a lot of communities that aren't as good as even 52. But we're not quite, we're way better than Indianapolis. But ideally, you want to be above 60%. And that basically comes down to the concept of when you get below a third, below a 40 rating, you're going to have to do a much, much more resource-intensive restoration of that roadway, which would probably involve some subgrade and such.
Right.
Whereas if we can get a road that's in its 50s, get it up, do a basic mill pave. Yeah, so.
So, and then do you feel like we're, we're, I mean, clearly from the first question, we are trending up. Do you see, is there deferred maintenance, other things that are coming down the line that are?
When I say we're hopeful to go up a percentage point, it's only because we're doing some major one-time spending this year. With the, beyond the community crossings, we're doing some major one-time spending from, I don't know if it was ARPA or Creed, one of those one-time sources that were in 2024's budget that improve, I think it was between College Walnut, fourth and sixth, there was about 2 million of extra funding.
But, but am I right that this is one of those things that, that becomes more expensive the worse they become?
Absolutely.
And so, so what, why not? It seems like the type of thing that you invest heavily in upfront as to save money down the line. And do you feel like we're doing that?
No.
So what, what's the, like, what are the, like, what needs to be done so that we do that?
Uh, I don't know how to say this other, any other way than put more money towards it. Find more outside funding, continue to utilize the grant funding. We've known since our first study that we needed to put more money towards paving. And it's, you know, when we balance out all the needs of the city, it's something that we've not ratcheted up.
And then, and then thank you for saying that. In relation to some of the asset management things, is that going to help with our, with addressing the PCI generally and the?
Only because I'm going to run out of time, I want to jump in. It won't necessarily increase our ability, it won't increase the overall ratings, but it will help us identify where we want to invest our resources.
Make it more efficient for us to do, great. Okay, thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Impeccable timing.
Councilmember Berstasberg?
I want to follow up on that actually because it like maybe stole most of my question. That's right, that's right. Nice job. You set in here in your goals to, you know, proactively do 10 street lane miles of seal cracks, 10 street lane miles of milling and preparing and then resurfacing 12 street lane miles. Is that like about the same as you've been doing each year? Okay, what, what would it take to actually, like, what kind of investment? Like, I mean, you just said a significant investment. It was kind of vague. So I just want a little bit more specific.
Let me do this. We, was it our 2022 study? So we've got some really good charts and graphics that can help explain all of this. And it's, it's actually all online, but I'd love to take an opportunity for you to come sit down and, and understand, or to, to see all of that information and how it gets projected out over time. I estimate, you know, if we really wanted to get to that 60, it's probably about ballparking about an additional expenditure of about $2 million for each of the next four years beyond what we do right now. And so when we're talking about possible bonding opportunities and other things, we've got to be creative there. Unfortunately, with like the infrastructure bill and things, it's not meant for pavement restoration as much as it is bigger, broader projects. So in terms of, you know, like a big one-time federal infusion, we're not going to get that for basic pavement maintenance. So we've got to be creative and really look at what sources are out there and what make most financial sense.
Okay, to kind of follow up on that, is, is the investment that needs to be made, is that more an investment in staff and like manpower to actually do it, or is it more an investment in materials? Like in terms of like how long it takes to do that and you only have so many months in a year that the weather's right and?
Yeah. So no, it's not more staff. It's more contracted services. We're only, I mean, yes, we could add 15 more staff members and try to pave seven or eight more lane miles per year and increase the material cost, where we really want to make those investments is through private contracted services for larger paving projects. So like with West Third Street's a good example. Leverage that community crossing funding, do a major, high-volume street in a large stretch through a contractor. And, because our capacity is not going to grow unless we grow people and materials and we can utilize those contractors. And we're limited more and more each year. Our construction season seems to, like, we're getting a lot of feedback about having some major paving projects coming up here after the students return. Well, you only have so much time and when school starts on August 2nd now with the school corporation, that's two to three weeks less than most years of the past.
Thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. When it comes to repaving projects, at what point between like when you're assessing where you might pave next and the project actually happening, like, do you coordinate with planning and transportation engineering on that path and like at what stage?
We do a draft paving list every November, December. We're working that up, distributing it out, finding what projects, other departments, CBU, planning and transportation, engineering. We get their feedback on, on that draft paving list and then utilize that feedback to, we've, we've often, we often as part of that process push a project that we're planning because the pavement condition index is lower than we want it to be. But CBU has a plan that year or the next year to replace a water main. So we don't want to go put a new surface down if they're going to do the water main. So we, there's a lot of those kind of coordination pieces that go into it.
Great, thank you. Your goal too about improving sidewalk overall condition index, it says, "Build new sidewalks and construct ADA-compliant accessible sidewalk ramps before resurfacing streets." But am I mistaken? There's, there's no capital allocated for that goal. Is that right?
No, there is.
I saw 1,200, or sorry, 1.2 million rather, in, in services for like saw cutting and the like, but it says capital outlays not applicable.
Okay, so some, it's, some of that's in supplies, some of it's in contracted services. Build new, that's probably not the best way to have worded it in the memo as far as build new.
Is it referring to sidewalk ramps? Build new sidewalk ramps?
Yes, I think so. It's not, we're not.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, you did mention something like we need a, a more holistic or like comprehensive, like approach to sidewalks. Is that right?
Yeah, absolutely.
So the council asked for the funding of a development of a sidewalk master plan to enable holistic and systematic improvements to pedestrian infrastructure and safety in areas according to highest need. And I don't believe that was included in this budget proposal, but it sounds like you'd support it. Had to bring conversation, like where, where are we on that?
Well, so we've got an internal sidewalk team that's, that's being populated with all the departments that touch on sidewalks. I think part of that sidewalk master, that team will work on a sidewalk master plan and also utilize, we're in the process of determining if we're going to move forward with the higher intensity rating that we have requested in our 2024 budget, where we would actually rate all of our sidewalks 1 to 100 as well. We're, we've, we're having some larger conversations about if now's the exact right time to do that or not, given where we want to be with a larger plan on sidewalks.
I'm sorry, the more detailed 2024 plan for the conditions like on the sidewalks that was, hasn't been implemented? that was, hasn't been implemented? Is that right?
Uh, well, we're, we haven't, we haven't pulled the trigger on that contract yet. No.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll follow up. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
I'm sorry, pull the trigger is not the right term to use. It's late.
Um, in looking at this, uh, budget presentation, it, it seems like, um, the outputs and outcomes are, um, uh, they're a little bit focused on, um, more like quantity rather than quality as far as outcomes. Like we're going to do 6,000, you know, linear feet of sidewalks. We're going to do X number of road re- resurfacing and all that. Um, what, have you thought about what the, the ver- the, the very broad end goal is, uh, for the street department and, um, how all of these little pieces fit into that, which I would imagine is how can people safely get from point A to point, point B?
Yes. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, you know, our goal with the street division is to be, um, a partner in improving the transportation network for all users. Um, and that's certainly the holistic, big picture goal. Um, some of that equates to how many miles we can pave a year, how many sidewalk, uh, heaves we can grind. Um, so it is a lot of outcome based in, in, in terms of those measurements, but, uh, the end holistic goal of the depart- of the division is, um, just improving the transportation network and, uh, for all users.
And, um, the, uh, the, the name of this division is still street operations, um, even though we have embraced, of course, sidewalks, side, uh, bicycle lanes and all that goes into what could be considered a street. Have you ever thought of renaming it complete streets?
I have a grand plan for a full reorganization of how we, how we, uh, refer to the different public works divisions and such. Um, it was, but, long story short, it was supposed to be part of last year's, uh, um, updates. We didn't make it in, but, um, yeah, we have a situation where we have a public works department and officially we have a street department and a sanitation department, but then we have other divisions. So in the end, and what our goal is to come back to you, maybe not in the first year of the new administration with a major organizational naming change, um, is to kind of rectify that so that each of the, the divisions are, are formally referred to as divisions as part of a department.
Okay. Yeah. I would urge you to-
Which could include renaming street into a different name than just the street division.
Yeah. Cause street really makes one think of vehicles and not so much the-
Yep.
Things that make it complete, which sidewalks, bike lanes, et cetera.
I, I'm guessing there's about 50 years of history into that and something that we'd be absolutely open to talking about.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I'll take one. Director Weisand.
Flash shot.
Um, so last year, um, there were some transfer responsibilities and I'm trying to remember this exactly. The CBU, um, transferred responsibility for y- street department to pave, do some paving after they did some work on water mains, et cetera.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And, um, how is that going, first of all?
Uh, operationally it's going great. Um, formally we still have some work to do to, um, as part of the inter local agreement with CBU, get that all finally formalized. But operationally it's working great. Um, the whole concept here is that the street division is the, um, uh, they have expertise in final, uh, repair of streets and sidewalks. Uh, it's not that utilities didn't have some staff members that had that expertise, but it just, it, it made sense for us to, uh, take that over. Um, and I referred to how the asset management system assists with that. Uh, the way it works is, uh, CBU is going to go out and make whatever repair to their infrastructure they're going to do. They're going to bring it back up to a couple inches to surface, leave that final repair to the street division. We're going to build back the material costs to CBU to pay the actual material costs and that, uh, inter local agreement between CBU and, uh, public works will balance out the cost of the staff and labor.
Okay, great. You anticipated my next question. Um, but I had a, another one. It was related to, um, so we did away with our leaf pickup, but you still have debris in the streets and I think that duty was transferred to CBU.
So CBU is part of the Title 13 and MS4 statewide updates. I may be getting a little out of my lane in, in describing this properly, but, uh, CBU has, um, newer stormwater regulations that the, um, grid-based approach to, or the, the day-to-day approach to sweets, street sweeping did shift over to, um, CBU. Street division still maintains a couple sweepers for the emergency callouts, the other aspects that don't fall to CBU. Um, we are looking at with, you mentioned the leaf collection, so I'll just, um, we are looking at some ways to, we're not going back to curb side vacuum leafing. Don't get me wrong. I'm not proposing that whatsoever. Uh, but we recognize we need to do a little bit more work in the curb line. Uh, the sweepers aren't the best unit to do that. They tend to push the leaves. Um, and so we're trying to become a little more innovative with that. Um, but we also need to continue to educate and work with the public to make sure that they know not to put those leaves into the curb line because we still had some of that going on and we're, we're, it's a challenge, but something we're working on.
Okay, good. Um, that's great. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll go to the public for a final item this evening, which is the street division, street and traffic of, uh, public works. I don't see anyone rushing to the microphone here.
And if there are any members-
How many people are queuing up?
I'm sorry. If there are any members of the public who want to comment, you can do so by raising your hand, um, on Zoom, using the reactions in the more tab or sending a chat to the meeting host. Um, not seeing any immediate hands going up.
Okay. Um, let's move on then for final comment on our final item this evening. Councilmember Flaherty.
Thanks. Um, first I was just asking about the repaving because I think, um, from my conversations with different department heads over time, I think we've slowly gotten better on coordinating across departments, which I appreciate. I do still think we've missed opportunities, uh, to think about alignment with moving in, moving towards alignment with our transportation plan at the same time we're doing repaving projects. It's not always possible. For instance, we called for protected bike lanes on West Third. Uh, the way that street was designed, unfortunately with a boulevard and two lanes, you know, for each direction of traffic, it, it's going to require removing the boulevard. That is a very capital intensive project. Obviously wasn't going to align with repaving. Uh, but there have been other instances where, where we could do more than we've been doing. So I think it's important to keep working on that process. Um, on sidewalk infrastructure, I've been just trying to get us to the position of wrapping our head around the problem for my entire time in office. I've been asking engineering every year, how do we approach this problem? How do we look at it at a full systems level? That's why we need a sidewalk master plan. That's why we asked for it. Um, you know, if we took it as seriously as we do street infrastructure for, for motor vehicles, I think we, it would, things would look very differently. Um, on a couple of fronts. First sidewalks, conditions index. Uh, we unfortunately made, I think, a bad decision in 2022 or so, whatever that contract was. Rather than doing a conditions index where you actually have a small vehicle traversing the sidewalk and measuring, um, we did a combination of like, um, satellite imagery or, or LiDAR and, uh, folks driving down the road with cameras and like a spot check. It didn't take long for myself and, and many others to find a whole lot of flaws with that analysis. It missed a whole bunch of accessibility problems, just drop offs from sidewalks and onto the, um, you know, the, the curb cut. Uh, so we're not aware of a whole lot of accessibility, uh, in, or inaccessible sidewalks out there because of the condition study we pursued. So I was really excited when we decided to correct that with, uh, a conditions index that would actually traverse, um, you know, the, the, every, every foot of sidewalk in the city. Uh, so it gives me concern that that hasn't, uh, moved forward yet. So I definitely want to follow up on that. Um, again, I think a sidewalk master plan is really what's needed to wrap our head around the, the scale of the problem and where to address things and implement our safe streets for all action plan. Um, we, we've had people die in our streets recently, including on South Walnut Street Pike where the cause of death was almost certainly that there's a sidewalk gap there. Like that was pretty damn sure that, I'm sorry for the language, proximate cause. Like, like, um, we should fix that. We should have a plan that identifies where those places are. It's, to me, like, this is like one of the most important things that I really think needs to be included in a serious way in this budget. Um, so I hope to see that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Stasberg.
Hi, thank you. Um, thanks everybody for hanging in this long, if you still are. Uh, I want to follow up a little bit on what Councilmember Flaherty said about sidewalk study. I'm really glad that there's progress being made in that direction. I also think that it is really, really important to prioritize that. So I'm looking forward to those updates, looking forward to that. Um, I, I also wonder on a slightly lighter note if, uh, if the street division is so big, maybe next year we should do this in reverse alphabetical order, um, so that we're all a little less tired when we get to the bigger, uh, departments. And then the last thing I want to say for any, anybody who's still hanging in this long, uh, one thing that Director Weisand mentioned was this idea of people kind of being like, oh my gosh, like why are you doing this project now? There's so many other projects going on. I think that there's a real lack of understanding in general about who is in charge of doing various construction projects. And I'll call out one that is quite irritating over in my neck of the woods right now, which is, uh, Smith and East Third. And, uh, you know, the West Third, uh, project got announced and there was a, oh, well, let's just finish this one. And that is a state level project, not a city level project. Um, we have several actually state related projects happening right now with our roads and it's a piece of education that maybe we as a city need to work on, as a community we need to work on to realize that the city is not responsible for every single project. We do have multiple state roads that go through and then Indiana University is a large state university. So all of that property is also technically state property, which means that there are some different rules that, that they have to follow, not necessarily the rules that the city of Bloomington makes. So all of that to say, like, there's some real educational pieces and opportunities to make sure that our residents really understand the, the things that we can control and the things that we don't control as much. Um, and it, you know, streets and traffic, like let's do as much as possible to, to improve the things that we can control while also communicating to residents, uh, where a different level of advocacy is needed. Thank you. And everybody have a wonderful evening.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes. Uh, thank you for Mr. Weisand and all the division heads who have sat through this evening and all your good work, um, through public works. Um, we, we need bond funding for sidewalks. We need serious investments. Um, it is a life or death, death issue in many cases. Um, sometimes, uh, people will say, but nobody walks along there anyway. Why, why should we put a sidewalk in? Well, they don't walk there because there is no sidewalk because they don't want to take their life in their hands. So, uh, I'm looking forward to hearing more about the geo bonds and, um, putting some, some money behind our stated goal of, um, pedestrian safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Rosenberger.
Thank you. A couple of notes for tonight. Thanks, Adam, and all your staff for sticking this out. I mean, it's really cool to all of you except for the man who just left, really stuck it out to the last minute, you know?
Sorry, I sent the two home that have to be up there earliest in the morning.
I was kidding. We're not allowed to single people out. Um, our comprehensive plan says we must prioritize non-motorized modes of transportation. As we all know, prioritize means treat or designate something as more important. For my five years on council, I have not seen that happen still with how people get around this town. We don't have a sidewalk budget. What if we, I've said this before, what if we have people responsible for the street in front of their house instead of the sidewalk? So we took over sidewalks for a while and people had to pave their own street. What a mess, you know? But that seems outrageous. So why is it outrageous the way, why don't people think it's outrageous the way we have it? That people who walk can't really get there safely. But also I would say, um, I guess I should call you Director Weisand. Thank you for the, the grinding. I think that is really helpful. It's definitely been done in my neighborhood and, um, I can't imagine the noise that makes when it's happening. I wouldn't want that job, but I did want to ask, can I do the job with the wood and slippers? Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Osori.
Again, just want to reiterate how grateful, um, as, as all my colleagues have said, how grateful we are, um, to all of you for, um, the hard work and putting together these memos and the presentation. Um, again, to the mayor's office and controller, thank you for being here and your support. Um, I, I, I think just, just related to, um, uh, streets and sidewalks, um, I'd, I'd really be interested in understanding what sort of like the upper limit of our capacity is. Um, and I know that there's a question about money, but whether, you know, if we imagined that we had unlimited funds, like what could we do? Um, because I also, I, I imagine there's some type of a physical, um, a limit to, you know, you can't like close all the streets and just like update them all right. So I'd be really interested in understanding sort of what we're, um, you know, the, the space that we're working with as we start taking those steps towards creating, um, because we're about to start the process of doing a new comprehensive plan and et cetera, et cetera. I think it would be really, really good, as, um, Councilmember Flaherty said, to, um, think strategically and systematically about how we make sure that the fundamental infrastructure of this city, um, is not falling behind in any way, but rather that we should be the best city in, in, at least in Indiana, um, in terms of, um, that type of infrastructure, which feels like a low bar. Um, so, you know, let's, let's, um, um, you know, go, go forward boldly. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Um, okay. I'll just give my thanks to, uh, Director Weisand and your fabulous and dedicated staff. Um, and, uh, I would just also like to say, I think with unanimity, the council, uh, is in agreement about a master plan for sidewalks and an evaluation of it and, and status for accessibility and for safety and so forth. Um, okay. Well, that concludes tonight's departmental hearings. Tomorrow night, uh, we'll continue on Wednesday with the Bloomington Housing Authority, Hand Department Housing and Neighborhood Development, Planning and Transportation Engineering, Bloomington Transit, City of Bloomington Utilities. Good night, everybody.